All right, good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from my pastor, Father Joseph Alsay of St. Augustine of Canterbury Episcopal Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Todd Stone.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, as we eagerly look to the dawning of a new day, we give you thanks for the gift of life and liberty and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help David, our mayor, and all elected officials to act with the highest character and the noblest conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Most of all, give all the citizens of our city, state, and country a spirit of service. Remind us that we are all stewards of your authority. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, great God of all, renew us with the strength of your presence as with joy we embark upon the task of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. And all of God's children said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. This is a special meeting, a second of four meetings to look at potential MAPS IV projects. Of course, we met on Tuesday and we will meet again on July 31st and August 6th. The gap merely due to trying to schedule around everybody's travel and even still things come up. I want to mention on Councilman Stone Cypher's behalf, he had a work conflict that came up at the last minute and took him out of town. And so I know he would have otherwise liked to have been here today. Thank you, everybody who's joining us and everybody watching online or in the hours and days ahead. I thought we had a very invigorating meeting on Tuesday and I'm looking forward to more today. So I think we'll plunge right in. Item 3A is a presentation on youth centers. And that presentation at first initially is going to be made by our Parks Director, Councilman, I mean Director Doug Cooper. And, you know, I would just preface this by saying, you know, we don't have the responsibility for schools. Doug, you don't run away. You can stand there. I'll be real quick. We don't have the responsibility for the school system here. That's a separate power here in Oklahoma. But we certainly still care for and care about our youth. And I think this is a very interesting proposal to, for us to step in and make sure that our youth are engaged after 3:00 and in the summers. And I think it's, in a way, our answer to the needs of our youth, which are also met through the education system. And I had, over the course of the last year, I've had more different groups, some of which I think we'll hear from after your presentation, come to me with different concepts along these lines. It's clearly a need in our city. So Doug, I turn the platform over to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. We, get myself organized here. Oklahoma City Parks has been involved with providing opportunities for our youth for decades and decades. And even with those opportunities, we know that, that we have limitations that we've encountered over the years. Modern technology and things along those lines being attractive to the younger set, we can, we can tell that through our millennials and how we operate some of our recreational facilities. This is a map, current map of Parks and Recreational Centers that we have throughout the city. It's also a map of our partner groups that are also providing some elements of what we are going to talk about today. You can see that we've got a pretty good cross-section of the city covered. Most of the larger sections of the city that have been populated for a great many years, we already have an existence in. But our problem with existing facilities, our existing facilities, is the fact that, again, as I mentioned on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, a lot of our facilities that were built in the 50s and the 60s look more like the old city jail or some of our older prisons and things along those lines. There's no windows. It's not attractive. They're not family-friendly. Again, it's, it's just what we have to work with. We do dynamic programming. I got a lot of great programming staff that try to provide opportunities, but we just not catching it. Our facilities, Mr. Cooper mentioned our performing arts facilities up at Northwest Optimist. They're jam-full of props and, and sets and costumes. This is the only open space at the performing arts facility. We are doing homework assistance and our computer labs are out in the hallways in these facilities. We want to make a difference. You can see that, again, this is a nice foyer, but there's no windows. You can't see the outside. You can't see the green spaces that surround some of these parks. I call this the Maypole Building. I don't know what we were thinking in the 60s when we built this one, but, but again, playing foot, foosal or table tennis and pool around the, around the Maypole. One of the reasons that we really are talking about this is the increase in juvenile crime and how we might be able to, to stop that from occurring. You heard from our friends from Palomar and trying to break the cycle and changing the thought processes. We have a big piece of that. I think with the opportunity of new youth centers, we can help get involved with breaking the cycles of, of some of these activities. We talked about some of the older kids and having opportunities for them to do positive things, but we also want to think about the littles. We have a large need for early childhood development. We want to be able to start affecting the, the outcomes of some of our younger people before they get into those age groups where they are attractive to those folks that would like to lead them down the wrong path. So, so we think, as we talk about these facilities, I want you to think about the opportunities that are there for these centers for younger people that may or may not yet be in school and how we might be able to help those children as well. I'm talking to help break some of the cycle. We have a lot of teen parents. Do they know how to properly raise their children? Do they know how to come into an opportunity? Can they bring their children someplace where they can play together, learn together, and have mentoring and assistance from other people? But the root of it is, is the high crime. This is a heat map of the city of Oklahoma City that the, the increase of color means the increase of violent crimes. And you can see that, again, most of our facilities and most of our partners are in those areas, but if they're old and unattractive like we have, we're, we need to make sure that we try to create a atmosphere of welcome and atmosphere of openness. You can also see that we have high crime rates from our sister cities. You know, we didn't go into the Bethany's or the Putnam's. And those of you that live there, I'm not saying that you're full of crime. I'm just saying that, that there are opportunities. You can see on the western side of the city, we have a huge heat spot up there by our Menace Westlake area. Not all those folks live in the city of Oklahoma City, but we have a need to help stem that activity. We want to look at this heat map. We want to study this heat map. We want to work with our, our current partners and our future partners. We don't want to duplicate. We want to augment or go into those neighborhoods that we are not serving people today. And what I want to share with you again today is, is concepts of what modern facilities may look like from around the country. I have examples from North Richland Hills, Texas, and Louisville, Colorado, and then our newest facility that's going to go into Ward 7. So the first one is North Richland Hills. You can see the dynamics of this facility. You can see the outside elements that are in here. If you look closely, you can see the windows. You can see that they are embracing the outdoors to the indoors. Again, these are indoor spaces within that North Richland Hills facility. Bright, cheerful, nice colors. Again, multi-use rooms. You can see that this is an early childhood development, setup for early childhood development. So again, we want to think about those children as well as the sixth, seventh, eighth, and freshman, sophomore, and seniors in high school as we think about these youth centers. This is the outside elevations of a Colorado facility. Again, bright, cheerful, accessible to the outdoors. This is what we are anticipating building at Douglas Park as part of our 2017 GEO bond. We're building a full-service recreation center. It's actually going to be the first one that the city has had. New horizons. Again, it's all about what it is we want to try to accomplish in these youth centers. Non-traditional recreational activity, life skills. We have sewing classes going on now, but they have to take everything down, put everything back in those hallways in the current recreation centers. We don't want to be able to expand on those life skills. We want to be able to have the, the, the young people learn something that they can be proud of, that may help build their self-esteem. Again, not everyone plays sports. Not everyone, you know, paints or plays music, but the creation of garments and, and things along those lines. Again, we want to make sure that our learning labs and our ability to mentor these kids help them do their homework, get the, the right tutelage after school and during summer break and spring breaks. We want to make sure. And then again, non-traditional gaming is a big part of these new centers that we want to move forward with. Will we have gymnasiums as part of these? It's pretty likely that we will, but they aren't going to be, you know, the huge where we're going to have tournaments and things along those lines. Some places where they can physically get active and, and recreate either with a ball or, or even young people's yoga. Big, big non-traditional thing is our performing arts. Again, we want to make sure that we are offering something, an opportunity at all of these centers, the best that we can, so that we give them something to be proud of, something that gives them an alternative, give them something more in a family-oriented type of circumstances. We know that we've got good partners in the Boys and Girls Clubs. We know we've got good partners in, in the YMCA's. We know we've got good partners in the City-County Health Department. We want to make sure that we cover all of the gaps. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to, to move forward. Now, right now, the, the four youth centers are suggested to be between 16 and 80 million dollars. We want to make sure that we cover that pretty well. And as the mayor talked about last Tuesday, there's an operating investment fund of 25 million dollars slated for, for these facilities. That, the proceeds off of that investment fund will help us be able to hire teachers and other types of mentors that, that we need at each one of these centers. We want to make sure that we have the highest level of staffing that we possibly can. We want to make sure that we can do enrichment trips with these kids, expose them to other partners like the Boathouse District, the Whitewater Facility, paddle boarding, kayaking, get them outdoors, expose our kids to something other than the, the normal traditional activities that you would find in a recreation center. And then the capital investment will be a shot in the arm. To keep the kids coming, you got to keep it fresh. And keep the kids coming, the next generations, you need to be able to stay up with technology and, and things that are new and fresh for these kids to participate in. But again, it also gives us the opportunity to talk, talk about the young people. Because if you think about it, we want these buildings active with young people from eight to four when the kids are in school. You know, well, we, we need to get those young parents in there. We need to get the littles in there. We need to do some preschool. We need to do some, some early childhood development programs from eight to four. And then when the, the older kids, the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders start coming out, then we have the facility available for them. One of the statistics that amazes me that I recently learned is if you don't catch a third grader before they turn into a fourth grader, their moral compass has been set. And then you got to do a lot of work. So those kids that are already fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, you know, so we want to try to catch some of those kids before they hit the third grade in these facilities as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or explore any other opportunities with y'all.
Doug, to clarify on the, on the operating funds, as I said on Tuesday, you know, a conservative expected return off of 25 million dollars would be about a million dollars, 4%. And then off of the capital fund would be, you know, about $400,000 a year. And that's into perpetuity. So that's, you know, that's, that's the power of, of those funds. And I think the, the idea of having a capital fund for these is uniquely necessary. As you said, I had, you know, people say to me, well, these will be really cool and awesome for about five years and then the computers will be old, the TV screens will be old, you know, the, the young people are the first to, to fall out of favor with, with things that you've done and haven't refreshed. And so that seemed like uniquely necessary for here. And I would also point out the 60 to 80 million dollars obviously range for the four youth centers does seem more than capable of producing the kind of really impressive examples that you presented here. I think our, so our current senior wellness centers, which also have an aquatics feature, which is pretty expensive and which we don't necessarily anticipate here, are ranging from 12 to 15 million dollars. So 20 million dollars without an aquatics feature goes a long way and I think will, will be a real regional draw.
That's our belief too.
In the places of the city. Comments, questions?
Doug, can you talk a little bit about what we would need to do to make sure that it's inclusive also for older kids, for junior high kids or high school kids, things like that?
Well, those are our primary goal, folks. We want to make sure, you know, we have a great relationship with PAL program now and, and they, they focus fifth, sixth, seventh graders in most part. We also, again, with the police department, the FAC program, we want to work with them further besides where they're at in our city. Those are our primary focus for after school, but we want to make sure that we're given the opportunity to do something with these buildings for all the younger kids as well. So we know that there will be opportunities that have to be designed so that the, the older sector of, of this, this group that we're trying to help will have their space. They will feel comfortable. They're not mixed in with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. One of our big partners, Boys and Girls Club, is here. They just added 6,200 square feet onto their building at Memorial Park just for teenagers. We're going to learn from that experience in the design of these facilities, but we want to make sure that we have some flexibility so that when they're in school, we have an opportunity to offer some, something for even the younger kids that aren't in school yet in these neighborhoods. Again, get them started on coming to these facilities, finding their parents, learning that it's a safe locale, that they will have proper tutelage, proper mentoring, and the opportunity to be enriched and, and have enhanced programming so that as they grow older, they know it's a safe place that they can, so if they are being led down the wrong path, they can come back to the center and get that, that, that centering again, hopefully.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Sure.
Doug, thank you for the presentation. I think it's, it's an exciting time for Oklahoma City. I would just encourage us to work together with other organizations, and you've mentioned several of them that are already doing a great job. The Boys and Girls Club, the City-County Health Department, Peter back there with the Police Athletic League, we got to give him a lot of credit as well as the whole police department for what they've been doing the past several years. But really work on that, you know, unfortunately, in Oklahoma City and as well as in Tulsa, but so we could say the state of Oklahoma in total, has a higher-than-normal in terms of crime rates compared to other cities. And hopefully this will go towards help bringing that down. But I, I think we should pull together the resources of all these groups, you know, and, and join in and see if we can find common approaches to address some of these problems, you know, so.
Well, you did nail it, Mr. Councilmember Greenwald. I didn't mention all the partners. I mean, we've had a relationship with Peter DeLisi and the Arts Council for decades in the Parks and Recreation Department. He's a big part of helping to plan this. The Allied Arts have been involved in our conversations. You know, Peter DeLisi and the Art Council are already in 33 schools now, Oklahoma, Oklahoma City Public Schools for sure. We want to make sure that those music teachers, those art teachers, that he's already getting involved with these kids, have a place to go in the summertime to keep them connected into that world that he's, that the Arts Council is creating in these schools. We want to keep that going in the summertime and during spring breaks. So, yeah, I didn't name all of the partners that have been involved to this point. Most of them are in the room today. We can't do it. I've said it before during budget processes, we can't do it without partners, even with this opportunity.
Right. And it's not an easy solution. When we talk in terms of, I'm going to go back to the negative side, the higher-than-normal crime rates, the violent crime that we experience here in Oklahoma City, and again, not just Oklahoma City, but Tulsa, the entire state, we have a higher-than-normal crime rate. If it was an easy solution, I think we would have addressed it many years ago, but it's a very complex solution. I would encourage us, Mayor, if it needs to come out of our general budget, you know, I think it's money well spent, but bring in some, I hate to say it, national experts in that area of reducing crime. I know we've got a lot of great people, both within our police department and with all these other agencies, to address the issue. But see how other communities that have experience in lowering their rates of crime, see what they were able to do and how they were able to achieve that success. And again, if it needs to come out of our general budget, I think we need to allocate some funds for that. And I certainly want to echo Councilman Stone's comments. We can't give up on the athletic side of activities for both the young ladies and the young men, all the way through high school with these facilities. Even when I was growing up, that was a, a great attraction to Woodson Municipal Gym, all the gyms, and play competitively against the other young people. So anyway, I'm all for this. I think it's great and I'd say let's move forward.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cooper was first. No?
I want to.
Okay. Larry?
Doug, at this point in the evaluation, is it possible that you, have you looked at using a model similar to the Senior Wellness Center where we built it and functioned and furnished it and then turned the operation over to specialists who bid on it? Is that possible?
There's always that possibility, but, but when you have the ability for the city to be the oversight and the, the leader of the pack, you can make sure that, you know, all nonprofits suffer from donor apathy. And even in operating our MAPS Paid For facilities, they struggle to make sure they meet ends. We, if this opportunity goes through and we get the O and M through the investment, they don't have to worry about raising the money to keep the lights on if we operate the facility. And as I've said, we have a lot of dynamic recreation people working in the Parks and Recreation Department right now that, you know, we turn them loose on these new facilities and you'll get some dynamic programming in conjunction with the partners that, that we will bring to the fold as well. But again, I think there's an opportunity to discuss that scenario, but I think it's in this case, with this high of a need to fix it, the city should maintain oversight and operational control of these youth centers.
Yeah, and I, I would add, you know, obviously in the conception of the senior wellness centers, it was envisioned that they would be self-sufficient through admission fees and that operators would see that and, and see that as an opportunity. Obviously here, we don't want to charge admission. I mean, there may be fees for special programming of some kind, but, but you ought to be able to make almost full use of these youth centers without a fee. And so I don't know how many operators would step forward for that deal.
Well, that's the best part is, is with us paying the light bills and keeping them fresh and keeping on the roofs from leaking and things along those lines, then my partners only have to worry about bringing their programming opportunities to that facility and can expand what we have to offer. So, so I think, I think there's, again, it could go either way, but, but I think from this perspective and what we want to accomplish, I think the, the city Parks Department having oversight and control of these buildings probably will be the best. That would be my professional suggestion to y'all.
I just want to say thank you too for the work into, into this presentation. I'm curious, from the, the crime heat map, is there, was there like a specific type of crime that you were pulling?
This is, this is violent crime.
Violent crime, okay.
We didn't focus on juvenile crime or anything. We, we wanted to focus on the violent crime side of things. I think if we added everything in here, we might be depressed.
Well, yeah. Well, because I just wanted, oh, go ahead.
I'll just say, I think everything would have been a factor when we're talking about how to meet the need and how to attack it in the correct way as far as some of these centers are concerned.
Yeah, well, because I just, I was going to specifically touch on, you know, seeing that, that strong red in the near south side and in the near northeast side. You know, I spoke with Pat Potts at the Potts Foundation, which their focus is on early, early childhood investment. And if you haven't seen, this week, the Tulsa World has been putting out a series on the high ACE scores that Oklahoma experiences. So ACES are adverse childhood experiences and most Oklahomans, I think the, we have, we have very high ACE scores. And so those adverse childhood experiences are anything from abuse, neglect, food insecurity, housing insecurity. And as you add all those up, the trauma that people experience then goes into, I think, feeding into what, what we see on this map. And I assume if we looked at other types of crime, we'd see similar, similar patterns just because with the ZIP codes that, when I spoke with the Potts Foundation, they sent me information about some ZIP codes that have the highest rate of mental health visits, lower socioeconomic status, high child abuse and neglect, and that's all in those, those hotspots. So you can really see that there are experts across the, the city and the, across the state that have recognized that that crime is so correlated with providing services that are from that early childhood, getting the support for parents to, to provide that engagement. Because I, and I'm, I might be lonely in this boat, but I, I give people the benefit of the doubt that a lot of people's parents that are maybe neglecting their children isn't because they're bad people, it's because they've also experienced similar things. And that giving people the tools, and I think providing them through the Parks Department is crucial because working for a nonprofit, I know how hard it is. I watch our development department scramble for dollars every single day. So I really love the idea that it would be housed within the Parks and Recs Department and y'all can just keep doing the great work you're doing, but just expand your ability to do so. So, thanks.
Well, you, again, you reinforced what I was saying. From eight to four during the school year, we have the opportunity to bring in From eight to four during the school year, we have the opportunity to bring in young parents that may or may not have employment, but to help them understand and get them, again, opportunities. We plan on partnering with some of the same partners you saw here with Palomar for that early childhood development side of things. And I say early childhood development, so those kids are safe, get a meal, but the young mothers or even single dads that may be struggling with that same element, we want to try to help break that cycle at that level through these facilities.
I have a couple of questions. My first one is, what happens to the existing recreational or youth centers that may be surrounded when we are replacing the youth centers? Because I'm thinking just strictly, I'm thinking Ward Seven. We have at least four to five recreational centers, if I'm not mistaken, and if we're replacing those, just one, with this Douglas Center, and that is a rendering, so that I do want to mention that's not final. We still need to talk to the community to make sure we understand what's happening and their input on what it will look like.
Yes, ma'am.
What's going to happen to those centers?
Well, in some cases, depending on where we cite them, that center might be replaced with a completely new center, the new youth center. Along those lines, with the opportunity that the mayor is suggesting you all consider with the investment pools, we aren't as likely to close centers so that we can move that general fund obligation into the new facilities. Being in Parks and Recreation, and Mayor talked about it, even former Councilmember Pete White, Parks and Recreation is usually the first to be reduced in their general fund operating budgets when cities fall on hard times. So we are usually cognizant if we build something new, we aren't necessarily going to get the budget dollars to properly staff that, so we look at cannibalizing and eliminating facilities to be able to move those resources into the new facility. When we built these community centers, they were for that small area, maybe a mile at the most. New trends, new benchmarks, our five-mile circles minimum around these larger recreational centers. And I know there's a transportation issue, and we all think about that. We are cognizant of that. We look at bus routes when we do these. We'll look, in fact, we have another map that actually has the bus routes superimposed on this map. So we knew where bus routes are, that maybe it'll make it easier for people to get to and from these. We are striking a new agreement with the school district to have a collaborative venture together. We're going to look for them for helping to bus kids to facilities, similar to some of our partners. But the reality is, if this goes forward with the O and M, with the capital, we are less likely to have to close centers. We can obligate, continue to obligate the general fund to those centers. But like I said, traditionally, we look at closing centers as we build new centers, because we aren't necessarily going to get the general fund to open those new centers properly. So I hope that answers your question, but we'll take a hard look. Old buildings may get replaced with a new building.
Can I jump in on that just real quick? I would also think that maybe it would be a factor that these are youth centers, and if there is some pretty in-demand, multi-generational use at an existing center, you wouldn't want to close it and say, "Sorry, your location for your daily gin rummy game is gone, and we've been replaced with a place that's only available for 18 and under." You know, I mean, I would think that we would want to maintain some centers potentially if they're being used multi-generationally. But maybe that multi-generational use can become more intense at that center as the youth migrate over to a nearby youth-focused center.
And again, not to divers, back to Tuesday's presentation, but if that portion of the MAPS plan goes forward and the Parks Department is beneficial, as I pointed out in the, you know, these existing facilities don't look welcoming. So if we can rehab them, put windows in them and create, give them new life in conjunction for that type of programming, because we do, you know, I'm very cognizant that I will have a gap between 18-year-olds and 50-year-olds that I want to program for. 50-year-olds are getting the senior centers. Anybody under 18, 19 are getting a youth center. So I want to make sure that we have opportunities for those folks between the ages of, say, 20 and 50, to go to a recreational facility.
And I guess the reason I did ask that, because specifically, as we were looking at the example you had of Pitts Park, and we're looking at the Northeast Community Center that is housed with the FAC program, and with the FAC program, that is one of the programs that actually helps to meet the need and talk about the crime and interact with police officers for our young people within the community. And they're having their basketball hoop fest, jamming hoop fest that's happening actually right now. So tonight is the night, if you want to see it in action, there, which is a very good shameless plug, so everyone can be a part of that and see the great work that the FAC program is doing through our Police Department to help to create relationships with our young people in those crime-ridden areas that we're talking about. Another question I have is, when we're looking at, I know I'm looking at operating investment and capital investment funds, and I'm wondering, when we're looking at costs, will costs increase for programming within these centers? Because we've already seen an increase already with programming when it comes to our centers. And are we going to be looking at that again, depending on how this may work out for these youth centers?
Well, as the mayor pointed out, the O and M is slated to keep us from having to charge fees for the general programming. The higher fees that we charge, like the performing arts camps that we have at Northwest Optimists are set up because they are, they have higher expenses to produce them and things along those lines. But in these cases, it's our intent to hopefully, not hopefully, we are bound and determined not to have any fees at these facilities.
For general use?
Correct.
By the way, did you have, you didn't have more to this presentation, did you?
That's it.
Okay. I feel like I jumped in and I didn't, okay, very good. Councilman Cooper.
Councilman Stone, I'm going to understand you took a trip recently to the Boys and Girls Club?
I did, Capitol Hill.
Which, I haven't been there yet. I've been to the one on 36th and Western, but they told me you attended. I'm very curious to hear what you saw, what you thought was effective, what you'd like to see more of.
The, first, I saw a bunch of happy kids in there that were having a blast. I didn't get to spend as much time as I would like there, because as I started watching what they were doing, honestly, I could have stayed there all day. Saw a lot of kids running around, playing games, organized games in a large area. Again, they were having fun and just kind of burning up some energy. You go into another room, they're in there making hand puppets, and it's not that they're just making hand puppets, they'll sit there and study something and then make a hand puppet that correlates to what they've just learned. Saw some books in there with kids reading. I mean, it's pretty transformational. And when you looked at, and they talked about like the different trips, they were taking these kids on different activities, field trips. And when you look at the kids in there, you're like, you know, a lot of these kids don't even realize that those things are out there for them to go do. So it's, I know it's eye-opening for them, and it just kind of, even for our own residents, shows them, hey, this is what's in your city. These are things that, you know, as you grow older, you'll be able to go do these and things like that. So hats off to the Boys and Girls Club, you know, on their activities down there, because it's fantastic.
Thanks for sharing that. I was wanting to ask you, when we had lunch one day, I was like, eh, the horseshoe will do just fine. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few things, as you all might imagine, on this topic. The first is, I want to take a moment and kind of go big picture here. I never planned on being a teacher. That was not the goal at all. I wanted to be a writer, and still working on that.
Say it's not too late.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When I started teaching at Jefferson on the south side, about 66th and Blackwelder, teaching college preparation and creative writing and English, I met some of the coolest kids that reminded me of the kids I went to school with at Nakoma Park. The major differences, and I think this is so important that we really pause, because I didn't, you know, I'd studied, as I said, the representation of violence and its root causes. I took for granted some things, and I want citywide for us to stop taking for granted some of the things I took for granted, because I think if we're going to do these youth centers, we have to complement it in our classrooms, too. And I've already spoken with Superintendent McDaniel about some of these ideas that I have. But most of my kids, and I taught 120 students a year in a program called AVID. It's a college preparation program, achievement via individual determination. And it's my job to help craft individuals, teach them what being an individual is through enhancing their reading skills, writing skills, critical thinking skills, group work and collaboration skills, organization. So here are the things I don't want to take for granted anymore. Number one, that organization. Most of my kids didn't know to bring a binder to school, a binder with dividers for each subject. Not because they're not capable of that, but we hadn't taught them that. And it was something I took for granted, because at Nakoma Park, they gave us agendas day one, and they taught us how to bring stuff to school that would keep us organized for the day through our classes. We cannot take for granted that our students in this school district know that. AVID is going a long way to teaching them that skill. It's a district-wide program. I think it is the best, smartest thing that this school district has ever done. Number two, note-taking. At Nakoma Park, they taught us note-taking skills. We had half the year that was typing. This was in 1994, before something called the Internet. For you kids, that's where you Snapchat. We took keyboarding the first half of the year, and then we took study skills the second half. My students at Jefferson, unless they are in this elective class called AVID, elective, they have to elect to be in there, there is no one teaching them note-taking skills. I really want that to resonate for a moment. And I want you to think as an adult, how many times in your life you take notes. I'm taking notes right now on my agenda. I believe these are open records, by the way. They also don't know, and this is critical, if we're going to prepare them to be our leaders and in charge of these businesses and citizens, please believe me when I tell you, until they stepped into that AVID classroom, there are 900 students at Jefferson, I had 120 of them, they did not know what a grade point average is. I don't, I'm not telling you they don't know what their grade point average is. I am saying to you, friends, they do not know what a grade point average is. Somewhere along the way, we stopped teaching them something that fundamental. I don't blame the teachers. I don't blame the administrators, and I don't blame the superintendents. Somewhere along the way, we started taking for granted some of these fundamental building blocks, those life skills. And I see this moment with the youth centers as an opportunity to not reinvent the will, but take us back to the basics. And I think if we're going to have these youth centers, we've got to start talking to our kids about the importance of what a grade point average is. It's the first thing I do in that AVID classroom. And this is critical, because something else I learned, we got to start spreading the news like that Frank Sinatra song. If the kids graduate from our school district, I learned, I've spoken with the mayor about this, but if they graduate from Oklahoma City Public Schools with the 2.0 GPA, they go to O-triple-C tuition-free. Spread that far and wide. And if they start taking Metro Tech classes in high school, they go to our award-winning Metro Techs for free. We are about to invest in all these capital projects, but I learned from one of our assistant city managers and from some construction unions and workers, 55 years old is the average age of the people in our trades. And if we're going to build all these things, we need to start letting our kids know that we need electricians and welders and plumbers and construction workers to help us rebuild, continue rebuilding this city. And we got to start talking about this. This is not, this is not me just doing that thing that I do where I like to talk. I'm saying this is something we have to talk about seriously. When I look at words like capital investment funds, when I look at words like building, and if we start saying this to our kids as we build these youth centers, then we can bring them into this process of rebuilding this city together. We've got to start talking like this. We have got to start talking like this. The other thing I want to emphasize, one of my students called, one of my students called City Hall, left a message, Daniel, and I asked him if I could use his name. And I returned his call last night. He had drainage problems over there on 61st and Douglas on south side. And he, I was able to put that into the Action Center, asked him how the drainage was going. "Mr. Cooper, it's better," he says. And I say, "Well, tomorrow, maybe talking about youth centers, Daniel. What do you want in your youth center?" And it's the stuff that Councilman Stone said. And he said Xboxes, to play those video games. I used The Legend of Zelda in my classroom to teach my students narrative structure, protagonist, antagonist, theme. They will never forget it. And they learned to take notes on those things while one kid played. Meet them where they are, and they will go far. He also said, "Mr. Cooper," during the night, these are some of the notes, open record, "Mr. Cooper, sometimes we're bullied," I asked him, "What would keep you from going to these youth centers? Mr. Cooper, sometimes we're bullied at school, and we might not want to go to the youth center, but hey, wouldn't it be cool if we had counselors there, the councilperson Hammond's point?" This is a, this is a seventh grader. This is a seventh grader going into eighth grade who understood that. He said they wanted those Xboxes because it would kind of trick the kids into going someplace. And once they're there, then they do that homework. And then they said soccer and basketball, to Councilperson Greenwell's point, they want those sports there. And I would like to see us partner with Embark, with their Road Scholar program that will use the city buses to get them to field trips for free. Let's use that to get them to these youth centers. And then I would like to say that, in concluding here, I had foster kids in my class who want to go on to be foster, do foster work, because they know that need. And I went on a ride-along Monday, and I want to applaud two police officers who I saw de-escalate a situation with an autistic teen who had violence in mind. And to watch them de-escalate that situation, new recruits, Officer Holt, Officer Farwick, new recruits, understanding that we have got to start addressing mental health and understanding that a lot of these things that we call crime are people in crisis, usually with mental health. Daniel saw it, and those two police officers saw it, too. And that was really exciting to see where our city is heading. And I hope that under the guidance of this new police chief, we will head in that direction going forward. But we have got to provide that ACE mental health component of this to the conversation. So I'm glad that we're thinking about youth centers. I've seen through, to Councilman Greenwell's point earlier, there are examples all across this city, or not city, country, of models like this, where crime reduces drastically when you have a holistic approach to an individual. Remember, AVID, achievement via individual determination. So I'm excited about this, but I'm asking, I'm begging, begging the city of Oklahoma City to take this all into consideration. Our grade point averages for our kids, connecting them to O-triple-C, so they have the skills that they'll need to succeed, to the Metro Techs, so they have the skills that they need to succeed, to these youth centers, so they have the skills that they need to succeed, and so that the police no longer have to deal with as much crime as they do, and the city council people stop having to deal with as many emails and phone calls as we do about that crime. So I know that was long, but I hope that you all understand that this is why I am serving on city council, is for this reason. Thank you.
Thank you. We've, there's been several mentions of partners and a holistic approach. I want to mention that we've already had meetings in the context of this project that included City County Health Department, Regional Food Bank, PAL, Allied Arts, Arts Council, Oklahoma City Public Schools, Boys and Girls Club, Fields and Futures, YMCA, all of those people have already been at the table, even though we're really in an embryonic phase of this. But it's definitely more than just a place to practice basketball, you know. But it's definitely more than just a place to practice basketball, you know? It is a, it is a holistic approach to improving the lives of our young people, especially in these challenged parts of our city. Does everyone mind? We've got a few people signed up. Does everyone mind if I plunge into that? Thank you, Doug. Yeah. So many of these that have signed up to speak do represent many of, most, if not all, of those entities I just mentioned are represented in the room today, and some have signed up to speak. And so we'll start with Sean McDaniel. Thank you, Superintendent McDaniel of Oklahoma City Public Schools, for taking the time to be here this morning. And we appreciate that you appreciate how this can interact and help the kids that we both serve.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. Greetings, Mr. Freeman, members of the council. Mr. Cooper, always a teacher. Love it, love listening to you. I'll be brief. I'm here to do a couple of things. One, to represent 46,000 students who attend our school system and maybe speak on their behalf a little bit, and then certainly in support of the presentation that Mr. Cooper just made. I want to be specific about translating the things that we saw, the agency partners, the activities that we've talked about, into the practical outcome that occurs in the schoolhouse. And what I mean by that is, there is a load of research that talks about kids who are active, particularly after school. So when we talk about arts programs, when we talk about STEM opportunities, we talk about sports, athletic, all those things that Mr. Cooper alluded to in his presentation, the practical result almost immediately is kids' self-esteem rises, their attendance increases for the better, they have fewer disciplinary referrals, their GPAs increase, graduation rates increase, all the things that we hope for as educators are enhanced when we offer extracurricular activities to our kids, particularly after-school programming. So you might imagine in a school district with 46,000 kids, with the number of agency partners that we have, that literally thousands of them have opportunities to improve their lives and get out of the cycle that they might find themselves in. But likewise, in a district our size, because of the limitations, we have thousands of kids, when the bell rings, they go home, or they go into the neighborhood, or they are up to things that we would think probably aren't positive things. So when we look at opportunities like youth centers, it gives thousands more of our kids those opportunities to change the trajectory of their lives. And one thing that I want to just conclude by saying is, the activities are great, the opportunities are great, but probably the most important thing for our kids that they need is that caring and compassionate adult that they get to routinely engage with in a youth center. You know, in my experience dealing with adults in youth centers, they're the most caring people on the earth, well, maybe next to teachers. And so to think that we have kids who don't have opportunity, who would have opportunity to engage with these adults in a youth center setting, that's what we need. It's the partnership. Councilman Cooper, I think you hit it, and I think it's been mentioned a couple of times, this is partnership. This is not a standalone, schools are over here, youth centers over here, cities over here. This is a partnering opportunity to really accelerate our entire city. So full support, appreciate the opportunity, Mayor. Thank you.
Superintendent, excuse me. Superintendent McDaniel? Sorry. Just real quick, one question.
I didn't know I was gonna have to answer questions.
I know. I didn't realize I was kind of honored speaking with the superintendent in public. Real quick, Councilwoman Hammond spoke to the ACE mental health scores.
Right.
Would you mind, just briefly, because I really want the public, and I think a lot of us know this maybe intuitively, but you have some data on this.
Right.
Where are we as a district, when it comes, a school district and a city, when it comes to mental health? Why is it so, would you say it's important that we have that mental health access for our kids, and why or why not?
So you asked me 18 questions right there. Let me, let me kind of zero it into this. We know that Oklahoma has the highest average ACE score in the country. In our public school system, Oklahoma City Public Schools, we are at the top of our state. So when we talk about the challenges that our kids come to school with relative to adverse childhood experiences, you know, we don't like to be number one in these types of rankings, but we are. So we have kids who, it's been mentioned, come to school, and the very last thing on their mind is the standardized test that they may be faced with that day. The very last thing on their mind is to sit in a classroom and listen to a lecture, because they're coming out of a place where they may have witnessed abuse, they may have witnessed a parent who was escorted out to a police car, and then expected to do their homework and go to bed and get up and go to school. So our kids are facing challenges, and the mental health aspect associated with those challenges is something that we have got to do a better job as a school system, as a city, as a state, addressing. So we believe that youth centers also provide that opportunity, where we can have social, emotional, mental health partners come in, and from that 3 o'clock bell until 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night, we can take care of our kids in that way. So this represents much more than the basketball program, which is important. It represents, what we talk about in the school system is just, let's break it down, let's simplify, we've got to do a better job of taking care of our kids. And so this presents that opportunity. But make no mistake, and I think we all know that, our kids, they have challenges unlike challenges anywhere else, and unlike challenges that any other generation has had. So I appreciate that question.
I appreciate your expertise on that, because that's why we're seeing all this crime, Councilperson Greenwell was talking about, and this is our, this is our chance to not promise utopia, but do some good work.
Good.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thanks.
Deborah Center and Christian Robinson of Allied Arts.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager and Council. So delighted to be here today. Representing Allied Arts, we were thrilled to be invited by Doug Cooper to be part of such an exciting initiative that will focus on our youth. We have certainly seen through our participation in the arts, when students are given that opportunity for that safe place, for that mentor, for how their lives can be transformed forever. And rather than me telling you exactly how that might happen, we brought one of the products of one of our programs that we have helped to fund. So I introduce Christian Robinson.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Christian Robinson. I'm 21 years old, and as I sit here in the audience, and I hear the potential directing funds towards these programs, I'm beyond excited. I know firsthand how kids need a safe place, because we need people to care about them, we need positive role models and exposure to the arts, because they're incredibly important in our society today. I grew up on 83rd and Robinson with a single mother of four kids, and I was not the good kid. I was involved with lots of things, I was very angry when I grew up, because my father left when I was very, very young, and I kind of blamed myself for the longest time. So I lashed out in school, I lashed out on my sisters, I have three sisters, so I'm the only boy, so house full of women, I'm the only male, so I became the male role model at a very young age. And on top of that, it got so bad to where, you ever seen the show called Beyond Scared Straight, where they send them to these, you know, jail facilities and they scare the kids? I'm a three-time graduate of Beyond Scared Straight. I sound, I say that like I'm proud of it, but I'm not. I went to a summer boys' home known as Varigon Academy and stayed there for a few months, and I also went to boot camp. So slow learner, but eventually, as time went on, I progressed and I got better and better. When I was 10 years old, attending Reach College Preparatory, I would discover the program called Life Change Ballroom. And it was actually a mentoring program that focused primarily on the ballroom dancing, and I quickly fell in love with it and the people itself. But it's not just about the dancing, it's about the family, the companionship, the safe haven. Because growing up in the neighborhood I grew up in, I was attacked by three grown men that were all Bloods, and it left me with a shattered shin and a severe concussion from all the stumping on the ground and being beat severely. And after that, I stayed in home, didn't come out, didn't feel safe. "Hey, brother, you want to go outside and play?" "No, I kind of don't want to go outside." So after experiencing, experiencing something like that, Life Change Ballroom was actually, actually loved me enough to help me move into a completely new neighborhood and a safer area. So it's, I've learned so much from Life Change Ballroom, and I listened and started making positive choices. My grades improved drastically. I developed an interest in piano, as well as, it was an opportunity for me growing up. Until one of my mentors found out that it was a passion for me and set me up with an amazing piano teacher. And I continued pursuing that, and I went to state and took a perfect score, then I went to district and took a perfect score in classical piano. So it's opened doors and opportunities for me, not only as a character, but as far as the opportunities I can take as far as a career choice in life, not just dancing. It's so much more than that. And I was a student at Life Change Ballroom for 11 years, and today I actually teach for the program now. So now I'm an in-school instructor, and we go from school to school, teaching inner-city youth how to not only dance, but to treat each other, how to be respectful, show integrity, basic life skills that every student should know. And there's so many things I want to do with my life now. I kind of want to go to school, I kind of want to do law enforcement, I want to be a pilot, I want to go to Juilliard for classical piano. I mean, I'm all over the place, but I, until I can figure out what I need to do, Life Change Ballroom is definitely where I'm going to be, because the arts mean so much more to me than just dancing. It's what I've learned from that experience. So thank you for listening to me, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you both.
And Christian is just one of thousands that would love the opportunity to have a safe place with these youth centers. And if art could be one component, whether it's arts, sports, tutoring, we just want it to be that magnet, so that we are investing in our kids and in futures of our kids.
Thank you.
I just want to speak to, speak to that point that Christian spoke about, and he's actually given me a few lessons in ballroom dancing.
Some salsa lessons, yeah.
Some salsa lessons. But I mean, this speaks to the youth centers, and I mean, obviously, while there are some unknowns as far as what's going on in our school system, if some of those schools will be there, what's going to happen with them, youth centers are definitely that, that stable piece that holds our youth at least to have a safe place. So we commend you, and I think you just turned 21, didn't you?
I did, Saturday, yeah.
That's right. Happy birthday to you for 21.
Thank you.
But this young man, I will say, thank you for that presentation, because you are, obviously, speak to the magnitude of what youth centers and programs like this can bring to our city and to our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Delisi with the Arts Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm here just to say thank you, to be able to be a part of this. Since the beginning, we've really been working with Councilman Stone Cypher to put this together on a committee, and I was really very pleased to be involved. I just wanted to give you all a thumbnail sketch of what we are doing currently. Arts Council of Oklahoma City, our mission is to bring the arts and the community together. And you probably know us, a lot of us, a lot of you know us for the Festival of the Arts and for opening night, big programs that we do, that actually reach hundreds of thousands of people. But we have a program that's called All Access Arts, that currently this year, and this is a, this speaks to the endowment possibilities and the monies that may possibly be needed to create programming for people. This year, we're in 18 senior living centers. We are also in 17 different libraries currently, right now, this summer, bringing programming in each library once a week over an eight-week period of time with the Neighborhood Arts Program. We're in 10 different recreational centers with the Arts in the Park Program that we partner with the City of Oklahoma City. And we're in 45 different Oklahoma City Public Schools this year. Now, Doug pointed out that we were in 33, and he was correct about that. We also added to that Title IV monies that were allocated to us through the Oklahoma City Public School System that focused on middle-school children for the first time this year. The total amount of money that we put into these programs through the Arts Council this year is $434,079, and that reached a total of 15,021 participants, which gives us an average cost per person of about $30 a person. And that's something I think we need to be, and this is just arts-related programming, and these youth centers are going to need a variety of different types of programming to really make them, you know, a vibrant and inclusive facilities that could be helpful to people of all ages. I think this is really important, that we kind of get a sense of, of the amount of money that costs to actually provide these services. Now, a big part of my job is to go out and raise those funds. And raising those money come from so many different resources. There is the potential for donor fatigue. Currently, the Arts in the Park Program is a 50-50 split. There's $10,000 put into that program to bring that, those 10 rec. centers that we're in. $5,000 of that comes from our coffers, and $5,000 of it comes from the city to create that programming. I think those sorts of partnerships are absolutely essential to ensure that these programs become successful. Every time I go to a donor and ask them for money, the very first question they ask me is how many other people are participating in this particular endeavor? They don't want to think that if they pull their money, the program is going to fail. We have to diversify our pool of resources. We're a provider, and we work very hard to, to come up with the funds necessary to put on these programs. We've, we've had a very good year as far as meeting the needs of the community, and we go out into the community to do that. It's a lot of centers, really proud of the work that we do, and also all the people that come together to help us with that. I think these youth centers are going to be an essential piece of this puzzle, and I think that the city is absolutely the person, the entity that should be administrating the overall program, but they definitely have the support of organizations like Arts Council of Oklahoma City and many, many others that are in this room. And we all work very hard together for our own programming and, and for then, for the programming that each of us provide. We're in Boys and Girls Clubs. Many of the providers of these arts programs that we, we put on are folks like Lyric Theater, the Philharmonic, Ballet Oklahoma. You know, we're using professional teaching artists to augment the arts, teachers that are already in the school, giving the kids an opportunity to see people who are actually making a living in their art form. And I think that's very essential for the kids to connect the dots, and also bridging, those bridging centers when they're not in school, so they can stay focused and thrive in summer programs and after-school programs when they're not being, their needs aren't being met by the Oklahoma City Public School System. So I thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I see, I see several supporters of Boys and Girls Club in the room today, and I know, Rick, you are among them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Rick Nagel. I'm the managing partner of Acorn Growth Companies. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Oklahoma County, Board of Directors of the United Way of Central Oklahoma, Executive Committee of the Oklahoma State Chamber of Commerce, and is a national trustee of Boys and Girls Clubs of America. I'm here today to express my gratitude and support for the council's evaluation of youth centers as being a core component of MAPS IV. Never has the need been greater in this community than right now to give the children the help and hope they desperately need. We've talked a lot about that need here this morning. As a state is seeking creative new ways today to deal with prison overcrowding and tackle criminal justice reform, while at the same time trying to address the workforce readiness issues we talked about here this morning as well, that affect virtually every business in Oklahoma, the real common sense answer is right in front of us. While we are forced to deal with many of these challenges reactively, we have a chance to get and stay ahead of them upfront once and for all by giving our kids safe places to go after school, places to belong, places to be mentored, to get help with schoolwork, places where they can go be kids and have good examples, where they can learn to be good citizens, to get exposure to the arts, to be part of a team, where they are encouraged and rewarded for making healthy choices, where they learn both technical and soft skills to be successful in the workplace, where they graduate ready to be productive, self-sustaining, contributing members of society. And when does this all happen? It happens after school. And where does it happen? It happens in youth centers. Youth centers like the one in Memorial Park, which has seen a transformation since the Boys and Girls Clubs of Oklahoma County planted its flag there in 1995, serving kids eight to 16, six to 18 years old, and still to this day only, to this day, only paying $10 a year to be a member. We are uniquely qualified to talk about how, and show empirically, how properly-run youth centers impact kids, teens, their families, neighborhoods, and communities for the better. We are living proof of that success, leveraging local support, and in the case of Boys and Girls Clubs of America... Girls Clubs of America, 150-year national track record of providing the most comprehensive set of youth programs and services offered in Oklahoma City today. We have positively impacted tens of thousands of kids living in the areas of our communities where the kids need us the most, but the need is far greater. It's been a renaissance where we have been located and we do it with resolve fueled by outcome-based data that shows that compared to kids who do not attend Boys and Girls Clubs, our members do better in school, are on track to graduate on time, are healthier, are engaged in their neighborhoods and our community, and graduate with a real plan for the future. But we don't do it alone. With a focus on only serving youth, we recognize that complex needs of these young people may require the help of other organizations with niche areas of focus but aren't logistically accessible. The Boys and Girls Clubs creates that access. Today, we participate and manage nearly 50 public and private partnerships and leverage the best of each to maximize the impact we are trying to bring to this city. It takes collaboration, it takes teamwork, and it takes a place to set up shop. It takes youth centers. But it's more than bricks and mortar. It's programming, it's depth, it's trained and staff and volunteers and people who care every day about these kids in our community. I stand here a proud alumni of the Boys and Girls Clubs. It changed my life for the better. I can say with authority, you can't have a Boys and Girls Club without a clubhouse, without that place to go and belong. We need these youth centers. I humbly ask that you maintain youth centers as a priority cornerstone of MAPS IV. We have a real chance to get ahead of all this for the long term. Let's go for it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to the Boys and Girls Club. Like Councilman Stone, I had the honor of going to the one there in Memorial Park. I'd never been. And to the students who are attending Boys and Girls Club, I have been bragging on you. You do not know that, so I'm going to say it in public right now. Sorry if it embarrasses you. So they asked me to come read a book and I read Where the Wild Things Are because I saw that they had crafted, they had drawn those images on their walls and stuff. And I was like, okay, well, let's read one of my favorite books. And as a film studies professor, I said, can I teach you some stuff about film too? And so we watched the movie version and I taught them just a little bit about how to analyze a film and what the id, the ego, and the superego are. And I said, find those in this film. And at the end of that film, the Boys and Girls Club impressed the heck out of me. These kids were saying stuff like, these monsters in this film represent the protagonist's inner struggle. They said, "represents," they said. I couldn't, oh, that moment when Max bites his mom and then later when the monsters bite this, that's a reflection of that. I think this is all in his head. My, I didn't speak like that in seventh and eighth grade. And so that, I just want to say hats off to the work you're doing. I believe you all reduced crime over there too, in Memorial Park. So you are a living testament and these kids continue to be a living testament. And thank you for inviting me to be a part of your story.
And I want to echo that because a couple of years ago, I was able to attend and they had a very special group of guests and it was the wrestling group A New Day. And they were at the Boys and Girls Club and I must say, I was like, oh my goodness. You know, that these young men that were wrestling, that they were there to talk to these young people. And I believe one of them has a family tied to Oklahoma, one of those young men in that wrestling group. But just the fact that, you know, they took the time to go out and speak to these young people and say, we are, we are with you and we support you as young people as well, I think that's what we're talking about when we talk about youth centers. And, you know, I was a product of the Eastside YMCA and we eventually closed down, so we didn't have anywhere to go after that. But we could have went to youth centers, but there wasn't one in my immediate neighborhood. But now we have the opportunity, as we're talking about, to make sure this doesn't happen to other young people. They will have a place to go.
Thank you. Tina Belcic.
My name is Tina Belcic and I am the Executive Vice President and CFO of Boys and Girls Club. Jane Sutter, our CEO, would love to have been here today with you, but she has actually taken about 12 of our teens to a national leadership conference in Orlando and so she couldn't be here today. I kind of wish I could just throw this out and speak to a lot of the things that you all have brought up because they're so relevant and so impactful and so important as a part of the components of this discussion. There are approximately 40,000 youth every day in Oklahoma City Public Schools and they span all seven wards and they live in poverty. These kids need a safe place to go after school and on breaks and they need a way to help them bridge the ever-growing opportunity gap that exists. Their needs vary from basics such as food and shelter, to academic help, to enrichment opportunities and things like dance, drama, arts, technology, robotics, sciences. They need a place and a way to participate in sports. They need help with college and career prep, life skills, and some just need a safe place to play and be a kid. We use trauma-informed programs to help meet many of these needs and we try very hard to have programming that includes something that every kid can be passionate about. It's what draws them in. There are many youth-serving organizations in Oklahoma City. We've heard all their names today and I'm proud to say we partner with every single one of the groups that has been mentioned. Doug covered a lot of them. You all have mentioned them. Personally, I just want to say, I'm very, very thankful. I live in a community where these organizations work together and put kids first. That is not the case in all the communities. I can tell you firsthand knowledge. Sometimes egos and personal priorities get in the way of doing what's right for our kids. And I think we have a very unique opportunity here with the organizations that we are fortunate enough to work with to come together and work for our kids. At Boys and Girls Club, running youth centers, which we call clubs, is the only thing we do. We serve the kids who need us most, as Rick said, and in many cases, we are the only place that they can go. They can't afford to go anywhere else. So I think keeping that cost that Doug was mentioning down to a minimum, if any at all, is really, really critical. We have waiting lists at all of our sites. We have over 4,000 members and we reach another 9,000 kids every year through community outreach programs and it's just a drop in the bucket. All of us together, all these amazing agencies doing such great work for kids, together, we aren't even scratching the surface of what our kids need. They've got to have more places to go. Well, some of the benefits of youth centers are obvious and you've heard many of them. Some of the more compelling benefits happen quietly and sometimes very personally. A youth center with a well-trained and caring staff delivering outcomes-driven programming can transform lives and completely change the trajectory of a child's future. Mr. AJ, would you stand up? This is Mr. AJ Johnson and probably everybody in the room knows him. When we talk about someone who cares about kids and one person making a difference in a child's life, this is who we're talking about. Mr. AJ Johnson has been with us for 17 years. He could probably name every kid that's ever come to Memorial Park by name. Many of our kids, when they graduate from high school, they have two tickets. He gets one of them. That's how impactful it is and how important a part of their lives he is. We had six young ladies who had never been able to go to a daddy-daughter dance this year. They went together and asked Mr. AJ if he would take them and he went with them. That is the kind of impact that you can make in a child's life when you have staff that know how to work with these kids and who love and care about these kids. That's what's so critically important to happen within the doors that we're going to build. We also have some amazing, amazing kids that are at an age-appropriate, that are age-appropriate for speaking here, like we've heard today and like we heard Tuesday. And unfortunately, as I mentioned, most of them are in Orlando. I wish that you would have the opportunity to meet them. Their stories are compelling and impactful and nothing could speak better to the impact that they can make. These are kids whose lives have been transformed because they had a youth center and a place to go. Just very quickly, a few examples that we have seen from our youth center and the impact they can make include, parents keep their jobs when they know their kids are safe. In the first year of one of our school-based youth centers, the mobility rate in that school dropped by over half. You mentioned the crime statistics, Mr. Cooper. At Memorial Park, through a combination of us building that, that club there, Doug having the ability to renovate that park, together, we reduced crime by over 70% in that neighborhood. In the first year at one of our other school-based youth centers, the kids' reading scores improved by 18% more and math scores improved by 20%, 21% more when compared with their peers at that same school in the same grade who weren't participating in Boys and Girls Club. Kids who participate in activities where adults hold them accountable have improved attendance, better grades, and are less likely to get into trouble. Our high school graduation rate for our teens is 99% compared with 73% across the city. In a recent study, 35% of Oklahoma City teens admitted to drinking or using marijuana in the past 30 days. Only 9%, wish it was zero, but at least they're being honest, 9% of the teens who attended our youth center have used these substances in the past 30 days. Kids attending youth centers also have lower teen pregnancy rates, less involvement in gangs, less use of hard drugs, and have a sense of belonging and community and benefit from having caring adults in their lives. All these statistics are great, but really, please come visit. You will see a youth center in action, meet these kids in person. And I think if you don't have a good feel for what a youth center can do, that would do it for you. Two little things I want to close with. One, Boys and Girls Clubs of America commissioned a study out of the University of Michigan to look at the return on investment to communities who had youth centers, or in our case, Boys and Girls Clubs. On a state-by-state basis, they measured the economic benefit of a $1 investment in a club, in this case, in Oklahoma. A $1 investment in a Boys and Girls Club in Oklahoma gives a $14.89 positive economic return on that investment to the citizens of Oklahoma. That's specific to Boys and Girls Club, but other youth centers with comparable programming and results should provide a very similar return. Finally, a couple of years ago, Boys and Girls Clubs of America conducted a survey of thousands of alumni all around the nation. As you might expect, 95% plus said they had a great time, they had made good friends, they enjoyed playing sports, it was overall a really wonderful experience. What was the most compelling thing to me out of that study is 54% of the alumni said that the clubs saved their lives. The intent of these examples is to show what a difference youth centers can make in the lives of our kids, their families, and our community. We hope that you will respectfully and strongly consider including youth centers as a part of MAPS IV. I believe our city will benefit and that our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, before we call the next speaker, I would like to comment on Tina and Rick's presentation. Having attended a couple of presentations of the Boys and Girls Club at the Caesar Chavez After-School Program, as they've all indicated, it does make a tremendous impact on both the child and the parents. And Tina brought that out, that the mobility that is a problem with a lot of the Oklahoma City Public Schools does decline as a result. My only concern is I'm getting the impression that the, after being out at Caesar Chavez and some of the administrators and teachers go to church with me, so I know that school pretty well, a lot could be said for onsite after-school programs. And if there's some way the city could fund the expansion of those programs because it's less intense in terms of capital costs, because many times the facilities are right there at the school. And often, like at Caesar Chavez, the teachers participate in the after-school programs, which enhances all sorts of things. But again, I know these off-site facilities are important, but if there's some way we could help support onsite and we've got a great partner with that already, it would be money well spent. Thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah. I completely agree, Councilperson. That is, you're exactly right. And I believe Doug Cooper told Councilperson Hammond and I after we first took off, right before we took office after the election, that this is some stuff they are already interested in doing. And it was a bit of shock to me because I didn't understand what that would look like, but I think you're exactly right. Also, I'm curious, you mentioned earlier that you had a, when you were younger, you went through some of this stuff too? You had access to those kind of recreational centers? Was it mostly sport? I'm just curious because it was missing, as Councilperson Nice was saying earlier, like this was kind of missing in my world. And I think there's just that gap that Doug Cooper spoke to, there's where we stopped doing it. I'm kind of curious what those experiences were like and what you thought was effective when you had it.
Right. So I grew up in the Capitol Hill area, which was a challenged area from a lot of perspectives. But we never realized that. We had a great time and utilized all the available park services because that's all we could use because they were free. But spent many, many days and evenings at Woodson Park. And then as we got older, you know, the challenge to go to the other municipal gyms to compare our abilities would pull us. And so we got to travel. Not that we got to travel, we traveled around the city to see who could put together the best team. But yeah, I think the athletic draw is very important and we should not give up on that anyway. As well as the pools, splash pads, all those things are important.
My name is Tom Bakum and I want to thank the mayor and city council for allowing me to speak today. This is a great topic. I represent a large community-based group called Voice. Voice is comprised of members from over 40 local churches and nonprofit organizations. And Voice, above all other items on the agenda this morning, supports the development of youth centers. Voice is encouraged that our youth need places to have positive activities of a wide variety and to be involved with, instead of sitting at home or on the streets or on their cellphones or joining gangs and becoming involved with drugs, criminal activities, and other less-desirable endeavors. Restoring our abandoned soccer fields is something else I'd like to see maybe as a part of this. We have them. I understand from yesterday that a lot of them are in bad shape and perhaps we can devote some effort to restoring those soccer fields. So again, I very much appreciate all the enthusiastic council members and the mayor for this opportunity and I really hope that you give youth their due because youth is the hope for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Susan Schmidt, Oklahoma City. I'm very happy to hear all the discussion about the variety and exciting programming that is planned for the youth centers in the future beyond the organized sports, which as a lot of people have said, not everyone does. One of the things that hasn't been discussed that is a pastime or requirement every day from childhood to death, it can bring joy, it can lead to a job, it helps oneself, and it helps and nurtures your family and friends, and that's the preparation of food. We all need to put food in our mouths and since home economics has been ended and dropped in most schools and families are relying more on fast foods and processed foods that contain high amounts of fruit coast corn syrup, trans fat, and other unhealthy ingredients, our nation has become obese. Programming for these youth centers should include regular, healthy lifestyle training like the Total Wellness Eight Week Course that's being put on currently by Oklahoma City and the county health departments. Besides that kind of lectured training, there needs to be hands-on cooking courses like the home economics classes. If, you know, it's one thing we heard about the sewing machines that are lifted up and put on a table. You can't do that with cooking. You've got to have sinks and refrigerators and stoves and ovens and all of that. But if you cannot outfit all these youth centers with home economics... But if you cannot outfit all these youth centers with home economics labs, you could have, and this would be a great thing for a foundation to fund, you could retrofit a bus with kitchen labs in there. The bus could then travel around to different youth centers, to the girls' and boys' clubs. It could even go when not used locally, it could even go out in the state to provide programming for cooking classes. We should be spending some of our MAPS dollars on developing skills that can be used every day, last a lifetime, and which will reduce taxes in the long run by reducing diabetes and other diseases that impact the cost of our healthcare, and also would increase the productivity of our citizens by having them be healthier and able to perform jobs that when they're overweight and have diabetes and other problems that they're unable to step up and do. So we need to teach cooking skills again. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jed Chappel, I'm the CEO and founder of City Center. We're actually currently in War Acres, but have plans to scale into Oklahoma City in 2020. We are an at-risk youth and families resource center. We've been in operation for about two years currently. We've seen tremendous results, but I want to share really briefly why I've seen so much value in having safe places to be in the after-school hours. Over 25 years ago, I was a drug dealer in Oklahoma City, on the northwest side of Oklahoma City. I was carrying a gun, and I got myself into a lot of trouble. I ended up being shot four times by a police officer here in Oklahoma City, losing 65% of my blood supply, then flatlining in the ambulance. It was because I was fatherless, I had no direction in life, I had no guidance, and no safe place to be in the after-school hours. So my desire to start our youth center that we currently have in War Acres came out of my personal experience, knowing that when you have access to opportunities like this, the trajectory of a young person's life completely changes. Currently at our center, we have a nutrition program, an education and athletic program as well, all designed to mentor kids through those avenues of activities. How we deliver the programs is very specific. Our center feels like a warm home, an inviting space for young people to come, where they know that they're safe in the after-school hours. The War Acres Police Department has shared with us that crime and vandalism has decreased significantly in the past two years that we've been open there, which is really exciting news. And I want to close with a really quick story. We operate within this collective impact model. We believe that partnerships with multiple organizations that we have currently as well have been critical in our mission and vision to reach young people in our city. We have several counselors that come to our center and counsel kids that are on their case management load. And while, when talking to a group of OU students came to our center, and they were asking us a lot of questions about, you know, why is it so, why is this collective impact model effective? What do you see, where do you see the value at in this collective impact model? And they began to ask questions, and one of those counselors were in the room at the time, and they asked her that specific question. And she said, you know, most of my days, I hear, I hear young people share with me the fact that they have suicidal thoughts in our sessions, but most of my day consists of finding them clothes, finding them food, finding them all these resources, and I can never get to the point where I actually speak to them about their suicidal thoughts or their challenges they're having, to your point, Councilman Cooper, of mental health issues that they are experiencing from the trauma that they've experienced in their families. She said, I come to City Center, and I'm sure this is the same for the Boys and Girls Club, I come to City Center, their clothes, clothing needs are met, they have shoes put on their feet, they have food in their stomachs, they have a safe place to play inside and outside on our basketball courts, and they're being mentored by positive people. Now, now I can sit down across the table and talk to this young person about their suicidal thoughts, because their basic needs are currently met. I highly advocate and strongly encourage that the city really push forward with more youth centers. They are so vital, they are so critical. And I will also add that we've seen great value in being in a neighborhood near a school and having that safe place to go after school. It's kind of their own space, it's not the school, but it's a new space, but it is close and in the neighborhood, so it's within walking distance. That's been very effective as well. Thank you so much for your time.
And I've, throughout this conversation about youth centers, a lot of people have mentioned City Center as a, as a model that we should, we should be thinking about. Joy Reardon.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. In regards, I've got several topics that are on y'all's agenda that I'm going to be speaking on, but as far as youth centers, do y'all actually know where the poorest of the poor in Oklahoma City are? The neighborhoods of where they're at. They go from Coltrane, District 7, Ward 7, up to 36th Street, from east side to the west side, to Rockwell, to the southwest 59th and southeast 59th. A lot of these programs and youth centers and stuff like that are outside of that area. Has anybody ever looked at the crime statistics, the suicide rates, all the other things that these, these other people are talking about for these neighborhoods? Has anybody ever looked at what goes on in these neighborhoods? A lot of it, yeah, a lot of it's businesses. But there's, I grew up, when I was a kid, I grew up on the south side, southwest 19th Street. Do you know what, what the housing project that was around that used to be called? Was Kerr Village. Do you know what would happen on any given day? If you didn't hear a siren every five minutes, there was something wrong. Something was going to blow off, blow up. And they didn't go in there one and two deep. They went in there three and four cars, two to officers to a car. When the fire department went in there, they went in with the police department, just to put the fires out. And it hasn't gotten much better, and I'm 50 years old. It really hasn't gotten much better. And, and the square that I talked about, the biggest thing is, there's also an under-utilized stuff that the Oklahoma City School Board is talking about. They're talking about closing schools. Why not look at the closed schools instead of building all these new fancy buildings and everything? Why not look at the closed schools and convert them into the youth centers or the senior centers? Instead of us spending X amount of dollars to build these new fancy buildings and everything, it would cost less to convert an old school. And the rich history that, of that school, we could, we could bring that rich history for the, the arts, because a lot of them have big auditoriums. They already have the stage. They already have areas for the, the theater stuff. But a lot of them are getting tore down or made into condos and stuff like that, in areas that we could use them for these youth centers. And there's a lot of, a lot of things out there that, what about the ADA stuff? What about the special education programs that used to be in school? What happened to that? There's a lot of programs that we have, like Mr. Doug said, have been taken away from the park service that I used to enjoy when I was a kid, to keep kids out of trouble. It's just something to think about.
Thank you. And, and by the way, at least one point you made probably is, deserves addressing, because the superintendent's here, we certainly have talked about the potential for partnering with the school district. Our timeline, you know, on MAPS projects is, is long. People, people I think have grown accustomed to that over the last 25 years, and they accept it now. And we know that it'll take years to open these youth centers. You know, Superintendent McDaniel's not waiting on us, he's already filled 11 of the 15. So of the 15 schools closed by Pathways of Greatness, 11 of them are already spoken for. I don't think you're tearing down any of them, right? That's, that's not in the plans. But if there's still four around in five years, you know, then I'm sure we'll have that conversation. I, I don't know that there will be, but that's, that's not off the table for sure.
Yeah, but like it, and we're losing to a lot of the states around us on a lot of issues, and that being one of them.
Right.
I mean, and a lot of the schools also have big fields that can be utilized by the city parks department and stuff, with a partnership with, with OCP, Public Schools.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Joy. Well, that concludes youth centers, and thank you to everyone. That was, that was a really kind of inspirational couple hours. So what we've kind of done, if you weren't here Tuesday, is I, I, everyone is welcome to stay. If, however, you were just specifically here for youth centers and you, you need to move on, now's okay, and I might even pause for a minute, minute while we do that transition. Okay, I think we might. So we're going to move now to item 3B, which is beautification. I've been involved in many levels on all of these projects, there's no, you shouldn't necessarily read anything into the fact that I'm going to make the presentation on beautification, other than, we're going to make up some time, so I might even hold myself to my own three-minute rule. Zach is going to help me go through these slides. But, you know, as you sort of, as you think about what MAPS is capable of, you're just, you're obviously looking for places, you know, areas in the city that we've fallen short. I think there's still a lot of people who feel that some aspects of our, of our corridors, highly-traffic corridors are, to use a polite U-word, utilitarian. You could think of an uglier word to use there as well, but, and, and I think that MAPS, this is an example of something that's only going to happen through MAPS if it's going to happen, you know? I mean, obviously, when we, when we do other bond and other initiatives, we usually get, you know, understandably focused on core things, and maybe here's a place where we could move the needle in a way that people would really appreciate, but we seem to struggle to find the resources to do otherwise. So, so real quick, Zach, if you wouldn't mind, you know, I think beautification, actually, it almost felt like a plant, but if you remember the gentleman, the citizen to be heard on Tuesday, who talked about, you know, it's, you only get one chance at a first impression and all of that, you know, it has a, it seems superficial, the appearance of your city, and especially your highly-traffic corridors, but it, it makes a difference, you know? People who come here considering this as a place to do business, considering this as a place to move, you know, they make judgments pretty quickly as they travel around the city, and, and those who live here permanently, who've already made the choice to live, or obviously want to live in a place that is aesthetically pleasing. And all of this has an economic, you know, consequence to our city. So I think that we have embraced that, you know, philosophy for many years through other things that we've, that we've prioritized, like public art and streetscaping, our 1% for art ordinance, our partnerships with Oklahoma City Beautiful, who we'll hear from in a few minutes, and, and special projects through the years, like the Skydance Bridge, you know? We could have just built a utilitarian, typical pedestrian bridge as we had in the past, but we, we made the special effort to partner with ODOT to put more dollars into that, to make something that was special and beautiful. I would say that we've turned that corner, and ODOT, to some extent, has also turned that corner. I know it seems like a little thing, but buffaloes and whatever are in the, in the walls of highways is a lot better than water stains. And, and so, you know, there's, a lot of progress has been made. Next slide, Zach. But, and here's a perfect example. You see here, Skydance Bridge, you see the new I-40 with color and, and Oklahoma City written in the walls, and, and designs and things that don't cost that much, but they do cost more than, than a blank wall, and so you have to prioritize it. Go on, Zach. Here he goes, a close-up of, of those designs. Next slide. However, you know, this is a corner we've, we've turned as, as a community and in partnership with, partnership with ODOT only in the last, you know, 15 years or so. And there's no telling when we'll ever get to some of the corridors that, that were already built and constructed, that I sort of characterize here as the left-behind corridors. And so, again, I don't think these are going to get addressed, certainly not by ODOT, and, and potentially not by us unless we look at it in, in the context of a MAPS. Zach? So here's an example of a left-behind corridor. This is I-44 as it passes through, I would guess your ward, James, I think, you know, just, just a kind of blank wall, far from inspirational, far from pleasing, and, and always you can count on some good water and rust stains as, as you pass by. Go on, Zach. So the proposal here is to make a difference. I mean, you could spend a billion dollars on this, you could spend 20 million dollars on this. I think that's kind of the minimum, 15 to 20 range, to really do anything worth, worth pursuing, if you're going to include, you know, a pretty equitable number of corridors around the city. And what I've identified here is the thought of city entrance gateways on our highways, the corridor from the airport, that was the one that the gentleman on Tuesday was particularly concerned about. That's got to be the one I hear the most about, you know, and it certainly is our first impression. Many of us, and we'll see a picture in a second, are familiar with the chain-link fence that's always kind of half-down, and, you know, doesn't really leave you with the, the impression that this city takes care of itself. Key areas along the Clara Luper Corridor, you know, some time ago, the city invested in streetscaping that goes from Kelly to the east, but the entrance to the Clara Luper Corridor, starting, you know, at I-235, and I'm going to show some pictures of that, is, is less than inspirational. And the intersection of Northeast 23rd and MLK is really, you know, potentially a special place. place that I think we could do more with. And, of course, if we pursued the initiative discussed on Tuesday with the Freedom Center, you'd have, you'd really like that to be a gateway. I-240 on the south side is a place where there's some potential. It also has a pedestrian bridge that, which I mentioned later, but there's three on the south side between I-240 and I-44 that we'll see pictures of. The OCU Corridor, I've always thought, you know, on 23rd Street, doesn't feel like you're driving by a university. We've never, as a city, really partnered with OCU on that, to try to turn that into something more substantial. There's been a lot of talk in the last few years, as we envision, you know, the launch of the American Indian Cultural Center, that the Reno Corridor between Bricktown and American Indian Cultural Center is very industrial and not aesthetically pleasing. The bridges, we'll see a picture of that in a moment. The bridges over the river at I-35 and I-44 are extremely utilitarian. The three South OKC pedestrian bridges I mentioned, I-44 that we just saw a picture of, is sort of one of those left-behind corridors. The thought has been discussed in conversations about this topic for the last few months of investing in, you know, a few key monuments around the city, you know, art, things that we've just never done. I mean, go to any great American city, and, you know, they have, you have those types of things, especially in the older cities, and we just, we always did the basics, you know, we did the bare minimum. And the discussion has been around of better to, you know, easier to maintain landscaping, and, of course, trees. And I would love, I would, I don't mind if trees are in the parks budget, and in this budget, and in every budget. Okay, go on, Zach. So here's an example of the South Oklahoma City pedestrian bridges. I think there was a deal at the Stockyards on a cattle chute, and we bought it. And then we, and then we put it over the highway. Here's the, here's your gateway to the Clara Lupa Corridor in Northeast Oklahoma City. Unless there's, unless somebody has spotted the Virgin Mary in those water stains, this is a less-than-inspirational way to enter a very important and critical part of our city. Obviously, a lot of this would need to be partnerships with ODOT, but I would like to think that if we bring dollars to the table, they will, they will work with us. You wouldn't even know this is a bridge, you know? I mean, great American cities have great bridges, and I'm not, I know that the dollars aren't here to rebuild this bridge, but there are easy little things, you know, just like you saw with the new I-40, the pillars, you know, at the intersections. I mean, there are easy little things you can do that aren't that expensive in the grand scheme of things, that would, that would do so much to have a better impression of our city, because this is not even really, doesn't even look like a bridge. Go on, Zach. Is that it? Okay. See? I told you. Did I? Did anyone tie me? So that's the concept? It's very, wait, Zach, there's got to be one more. There you go. There's the airport. There's our favorite, our favorite chain-link fence. There, I knew there was one more, because there's kind of an important part of this proposal as well. We've never had, we have people on staff, a lot of people on staff, among our 4,800 employees, who would tell you that they, that some level of their job is concerned with the aesthetic value of our city, and certainly Robbie Kinzel and others would feel that as well. But there's nobody who wakes up every morning and is that central point for beautification, you know, whether it's an unmoded median, or graffiti, or a corridor that, for whatever reason, has got a ton of trash, more than usual. You know, we, as elected officials, we don't, we don't have a beautification person on our speed dial, and I can guarantee you, if we did, we'd call them almost more than anybody else. I also know, I'm conscious of the fact that if we added that position in the budget, and when, as Doug has talked about, parks are the first to go, well, he'd find himself the second to go, because I'm pretty sure, I know, and I'd be hard-pressed to make the argument, when times get bad, and they usually do at some point, Craig's going to say, you know, I think it's the beautification jobs, too. We've got to... So my thought is, you use what this concept that we've been talking about, about perpetually funding things with a pot of money, let's perpetually fund with $5 million, two to three beautification staff positions, that are then therefore not really a part of the regular budget. They'd be, you know, they'd be earmarked, and they would not be cut in when times go bad. And as I explain here in the slide, you know, the, this is somebody who can work with both the public sector and the private sector to promote beautification. They can pursue grants. They could do even more work that is currently completely done by Oklahoma City Beautiful in terms of cleanup of public areas and public-private partnerships, you know, the sort of adopt-a-highway type of thing. You know, they can work with private business to keep their property clean and updated, be troubleshooters, as I was sort of alluding to earlier, for issues of beautification that come up. They can be out there, just like Robbie is, but in more support, pursuing murals and other art, and then, of course, be sort of that liaison with Oklahoma City Beautiful, which has filled that role, and we're not trying to replace you. I just want, I just want us to have somebody on our team whose full-time job is to focus on that and work with you. Zach, I think, is that really it? Yeah. So there's just a summary of the proposal. So a little bit of capital, a little bit of an operating fund. Any questions, comments?
I just have a comment, as we were talking, and even considering the presentation or the comments that were made on Tuesday, looking at landscaping and creating maybe a garden and different things, I just want to publicly put out there that hopefully we will consider creating a garden with flowers, just in beautification, and name it in honor of Bessie Coleman, who attended Langston University and was the first African-American pilot, female pilot.
Oh, at the airport, you're saying?
At the airport. I'm thinking at the airport, just to honor. As we're honoring Will Rogers, we honor others that have made a mark, or at least been a part of shaping parts of Oklahoma and Oklahoma City. So that's just one suggestion that I have. But I am excited to see what could happen, especially with the Clara Lupa Corridor and all of our other beautifications, because I think it's long overdue for a lot of those projects. And I'm definitely excited about the opportunities that come with that.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
So, thanks for your presentation, Mayor. I'm really excited about this project. It complements a lot of what Councilperson Hammond and I were talking about the other day with those pedestrian priority zones and placemaking. And I can tell you, as someone who teaches on the south side, right at I-240, right here, excuse me. Can people hear me? What's up? Sorry. Geez, you think you're perfect, and then life reminds you you're not. There you go. So, no, my students, some of them walk across that bridge on 240 from apartments that are mostly concrete jungles, right? That don't lend themselves to community, and don't lend themselves to placemaking, and they don't feel safe. And then they cross what you called the cattle chute? That's not cool. And what mood does that put them in by the time they get to Prairie Queen Elementary, or by the time they get to Jefferson, or by the time they get to Webster? And so that better environment really does mean, what does the child see as she or he walks to school? And so when I have driven from the Paseo down Walker to the south side for the last four years, that has always been on my mind. So I'm really glad we're thinking about those corridors over there, to the airport as well. It's something I heard a lot from Ward 2 people, that, you know, and, you know, something else I want to say about the south side and the northeast side. A lot of people, when I was knocking doors in Ward 2, when I would ask what their concerns and hopes were for our city, they would actually mention the northeast side and the south side. They felt like these parts of town had been left behind. This was northwest Oklahoma City saying that. So, and that just made me so proud of Ward 2 voters, that they understood that, and they really saw that we're all in this together. And so I'm really excited that we're talking about beautification across the entire city, so.
I just have one question. What would the, from that $5 million operational fund, what would the projected return, or like, per year?
Yeah, $200,000. That's why I said two or three positions.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Well, we have some speakers signed up for this. Lisa Siner with Oklahoma City Beautiful.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Siner, the Executive Director of Oklahoma City Beautiful, and I have to go off my script for five seconds and say that we are, our brains are just going crazy over here, thinking how we can partner with the youth centers, bringing our environmental education in our outdoor classrooms, and we can bring that good food in there to teach those classes and those kids how to cook. But I really appreciate Mayor Holt and City Council for letting me address you today, and I want to thank Mayor Holt for making priority on beautification. And since 1967, when Oklahoma City Beautiful began as a beautification committee in the city, under Mayor Ron Norick, the leadership has understood the importance of a clean and beautiful city, and we are getting there little by little, and we're so, this will really give a big boost. We understand that a clean and beautiful city is, does bring economic benefit to the community and its citizens. It does build community. And we've also noticed that through our projects on, in front of the Edu Care, that it also is contagious. Beautification is contagious. If you bring something to a community, like a beautiful median, they clean up their yards. They take their cars out of their front lawn. So we know it's contagious and it is important. Beautiful entryways into our city tells our visitors and businesses looking for a place to call home that we care, that we, it is a view of how we look at our own self-worth. Studies tell us that rents, incomes, education increase in beautiful neighborhoods, and while crime goes down. For our community alone, and I know Mark Baze will tell us all about this, that trees provide visual appear, air quality, health and well-being, cost savings, management stormwater issues, property values, crime conduction, cooling effects, and adverse wind speed, just to name a few of the benefits. And since we will actually be providing our students through all these wonderful MAPS ideas, better places to learn and grow, we're going to have to have new businesses come into this city to give them the opportunity to find these jobs. And these project ideas that Mayor Holt has shared will have a direct impact on tourism, economic development, business success, visitors' impressions, and the residents' quality of life. The Board and Staff of Oklahoma City Beautiful encourages you to make beautification a priority for MAPS 4, and we look forward to partnering with the city, using our 50-year history to make this vision a reality. This will truly be an investment in our great community for years to come. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question, and it might be for municipal council. I kept hearing a lot during the campaign about, and even since, about how crosswalks could be brought into this conversation, how we could be inventive with our crosswalks. And I mentioned this to our Public Works Director during Pride Month, the idea of doing a rainbow-colored crosswalk, other cities have done it. What we ended up doing was painting an entire intersection and putting that rainbow flag there for the first time in the city's history. And the people, when I tell you people loved it, people loved it. It was insane. But I was told that the Department of Justice has issued a ruling on crosswalks, saying that crosswalks...
I think it's Department of Transportation.
Is it Department of Transportation?
Yeah.
The state or the federal level?
Federal.
Federal? That crosswalks have to be recognizably a crosswalk, so they couldn't be rainbow-colored, they couldn't be, I've seen like these sort of slightly elevated-type piano-type thing, you know, and there's just, sorry, creative art people have come up with creative crosswalks. What are the rulings on that? What's possible? I don't, I don't, I just see other cities doing it, they're just breaking the law.
I know. It's a whole thing, and that's what we're told, is that other cities are breaking the guidelines of the federal government. You know, this comes up so much that we might need a, like, an issue paper on this or something, and a copy of the letter. We supposedly have a letter from the Department of Transportation ordering us not to do that or something. But we need to see that, I think.
Well, and I'd be curious, what are the, in that whole discussion, what are those other cities experiencing as far as repercussions? Because San Francisco's got them everywhere. I go to other cities, they've got them, and as far as I can tell, they're still getting funding. So I don't, I'm curious, too, to...
Yeah. We probably need to dig into that. Okay, Mark Baze? Mr. Tree himself.
Okay, right. I can do the yoga tree pose, by the way. But ditto what Lisa said, that's all I got.
That's fine.
Thank you for the opportunity, and good morning, and to invite people to come here for the next few minutes. I've got you as a captive audience. My name is Mark Baze. I'm a longtime resident of Oklahoma City in the Skyline neighborhood, Ward 2. I've lived here since the mid-'80s. So in those 35 years-plus, I've had the opportunity to watch Oklahoma City blossom and continue to grow as truly a destination city. I am one of those citizens that have continued to vote for the collection of the sales tax, that have helped support all these MAPS projects way back when Mayor Norick kind of had all this stuff going on. Some of those projects, I have to admit, I have questioned some of those projects along the way, but even some of those projects that I didn't have a fully vested interest in, I say that they've always played out to the highest level and continue to move our city forward in a positive direction. My point I'd like to make today, and the reason for me to be in here, is to encourage you, as MAPS Forward moves along, in all of its inevitable moving parts, is to think about beautification in perhaps a little different way. Oklahoma City is in the middle of the largest forest-cover types in the state, and that's the Crosstimbers Forest. Trees, in particular, landscaping and using the word beautification should continue to be looked at as a valuable asset to our city. Trees and beautification should continue to be an integral part of any of the components of MAPS 4. I mean, Frederick Law Olmsted, the brilliant mind that, and the architect of Central Park in New York City, said that the park would become the lungs of the city, and he was so right. So trees, and this is my different way of approach that Lisa talked about, whether they're street trees, park trees, trees along sidewalks, trail systems, trees in front yards, shade in your homes, business in streets, they should continue to be looked upon as valuable green infrastructure for our city. And it's because of the many benefits some Lisa talked about, there's environmental services, there's economic vitality, the livability, the human health benefits that we get from trees. It goes way beyond beautification. Job performances at school learning are also some things that trees help provide. So I'd like to encourage you to use all the resources available as we move forward with MAPS, the specialists in their fields and the science, use this current research to make sure we're doing everything correctly for the long term. And on that research note, some of you in this room may be aware that currently in central Oklahoma, we're involved in the Tree Canopy Study throughout a 536-square-mile urbanized area of central Oklahoma. I don't have the time to elaborate on this today, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I will say this, that this is something that's been a collaboration of Oklahoma Forestry Services, the Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. It's a first-of-its-kind partnership. Each of these partners brought some resources to the table. It's the first of its kind. And as you move forward with this green planning in this MAPS, this would be a valuable tool for you to use in this process. Lastly, I'd like you to remember this, that trees are one of the few things that, once installed and cared for correctly, no matter where, they will continue to grow in value through time. They appreciate rather than depreciate. Trees are necessities and not niceties in our city, and trees really true are the lungs of our city, just like they are all over the place. I appreciate your budget. You can't even, you can't say trees without smiling, you know? And I appreciate what you had in your budget and everything, and I smile every day and be willing partner to help you move forward in your MAPS endeavors. So thank you.
Thank you. Ryan McMullin, former State Representative, Ryan McMullin.
Hey, well, good morning, Ryan McMullin, 700 Northwest 24th Street, now an Oklahoma City resident. And my wife and I, we bought our home here in Oklahoma City after spending about a decade away from Oklahoma City. For the last decade, our careers took us different places around the country, and we had an opportunity to move back to Oklahoma City a couple of years ago, and it was after living and experiencing a variety of neighborhoods across the country. We had matured to a place in our lives where we knew precisely the kind of amenities that we really value in a neighborhood. We personally value a diverse neighborhood, a neighborhood where folks sit on their front porches and can visit with their neighbors walking down a sidewalk. We found that, and we found a home where we could walk or bike to our grocery store, to our doctor, to our pharmacist, to our hardware store. We found a home that was easy-walking and biking distance to all of... We found a home that was easy walking and biking distance to all of our favorite business districts: Uptown, Midtown, Paseo, Plaza, Western, and the Asian Cultural District. As we settled into our home in our new neighborhood, we began a process of trial and error, trying to discover what are the most comfortable routes to all of our favorite places. As was thoroughly articulated on Tuesday, we encountered routes with missing or crumbling sidewalks and very little biking infrastructure. Our biggest challenge, however, was finding walking and biking routes that would provide some level of protection from the searing sun and the oppressive heat that we so often encounter during this half of a year. And frankly, as we discovered our better routes, as we went through that trial and error process, if given the choice between walking on a brand-new sidewalk without any trees, fully exposed to the sun, fully exposed to the wind, or choosing a different route that didn't have a single sidewalk, yet was shaded by a canopy of street trees, you'll find me walking in the street in temperatures 30 degrees cooler than that other sidewalk and enjoying the amenities of what a green space can provide. Don't get me wrong, sidewalks and bike lanes are extremely important. But if we want more value out of those investments that we have been making in sidewalks and bike lanes, and if we want to get a bigger bang for our buck as we look at making more of those investments in this MAPS4, street trees have to be a part of that conversation. Our city's done a commendable job, investing in trees within our parks, investing in trees in our trail system, investing in some level of trees in some of our newer major corridors that the mayor was referencing. But I contend that while those public spaces are certainly a valuable place to be planting trees, our neighborhoods, the street frontage in our neighborhoods are just as a valuable place and just as a place that deserves that kind of investment, especially in a MAPS project that my council member, James Cooper, yesterday termed "MAPS for Neighbors." It fits in perfectly. It is my hope that in this MAPS4, that my city of Oklahoma City will invest in low-maintenance Oklahoma City-proven trees, species with roots that are less likely to impact sidewalks in our infrastructure, that are thoughtfully planted within our neighborhoods, in our corridors where we're making these investments in sidewalks and bike lanes, and those pedestrian priority areas that we also discussed on Saturday. This is an investment in addition to the tree investment that I know we're going to make in the parks, in the trails, in the major corridors that the mayor referenced. I agree. I think there should be trees in almost every one of these categories of MAPS projects, beautification, parks, the sidewalks and bike lane section of the MAPS4. There's room, and there's critical value in each and every one of these sections. Street trees are no doubt one of the most cost-effective, long-term investments a city can make in beautification. But frankly, even if trees weren't beautiful, even if they didn't contribute to the visual impression of our city, the impression our city makes on visitors or potential business recruits, street trees are smart investments for an incredibly wide range of purposes. Continuing on what Mark Baze had discussed earlier, urban -- an urban tree canopy, a city that has a well-developed urban tree canopy, the overall temperature of that city is a full six degrees cooler than a city that does not have an urban tree canopy. Street trees, urban tree canopy intercepts a full 35% of the rain runoff that lands in a city. And in fact, for every dollar that we invest in street trees, it's a dollar-for-dollar match. Every dollar that you invest in street trees is a full dollar that you don't have to invest in the city's drainage system. It's that significant. Tree shading a bus shelter, I know a priority of several of our council members. Tree shading that bus shelter will reduce the temperatures on that bus shelter by a full 30 degrees. I don't know if you see it, but as I drive around the city, you see individuals that are hovering, and particularly this time of year, that are hovering in this little sliver of shade as the sun goes across those bus shelters, really providing very little shade as a shelter, and just sitting on the backside of it hovering, looking for some shade. Street trees need to be a critical part of our mass transit investment as well. Street trees also affect transportation. Street tree shading pavement reduce resurfacing frequency and costs by a full 15 to 35% because of the cooler temperatures that are not impacting those street surfaces. Overall, for a city, that for every dollar that we invest in street trees, the city of Oklahoma City would receive a $3 return of hard-cost returns, actual city budget returns. And that doesn't even take into account all of the social benefits that I think we all recognize that come from trees, things like lower crime rates, things like better health, and specifically, lower rates of acute mental health episodes. There's scarcely, scarcely a single section of the city budget or the challenges that we face as a city of Oklahoma City that are not impacted and benefited by a greater investment in Oklahoma City's tree canopy. And I'm excited about the prospect of seeing a significant amount of improvement under MAPS4. Thank you, Mayor.
Was he a plant? I feel like that was a plant. James, did you get him to say all that?
No, I'm sorry. That's not a plant. That was a tree. That was a tree. That was different. No, I didn't. But I will tell you, I got some of my ideas from him. He's Ward 2 people. I don't know.
Joy Reardon.
Hello again, councilmembers and mayor. On beautification, I've got one, two, three, four, five things that I need to bring up to y'all's attention. One being, like the gentleman said, sidewalks. Thank you for the tree idea, for trees not affecting sidewalks. Because for ADA, not just for wheelchairs, but for the blind, for people, walkers, canes, and stuff like that, most people don't realize that people that can't see really depend on the sidewalk. We have a severe, in certain areas of our city, especially with the new boulevard going in and everything, we have a severe homeless population that's literally living underneath the bridges that -- and they're starting fire, and it's going to end up destroying the concrete, and we're going to end up having fatalities because of the bridges falling. Most people don't realize that that's where the homeless congregate is, around Jesus House, the City Rescue Mission, and the bridges on the boulevard. There's others out sporadic around, like MacArthur and stuff like that, the big chopping areas and stuff like that. What is that going to say to the visitors that's coming in, especially on Meridian? At any given day, you can see probably 10, 12 people on Meridian, on MacArthur, in downtown. Something should be done not to get rid of them. And I know there's programs out there, but to help steer them away from the City Rescue Mission, because the City Rescue Mission really doesn't do much. They have programs and stuff like that, but it's -- they have put more people out on the street than they have actually helped in their shelters and stuff. Same way with the Jesus House and stuff like that. And I also work with several outreach programs. That is where I'm getting this data from. I'm actually bringing to y'all what the homeless is saying. The other parts is, yeah, Bricktown is great. It's a great thing for the city and everything, but there's other parts of the city that should be looked at to help bring businesses to Oklahoma City. The Memorial, yes, that was a tragedy. I was part of the rescue workers that went down there at the initial wave. And drainage. Drainage is atrocious in Oklahoma City. In other cities, before we have major storms and everything, they actually go around and vacuum out and clean out the drainages. I've called in on probably 187 different drainages, and nothing is being done about Mr. Manager, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so that's something that we do on a regular basis, and when we get complaints and calls, it's something that we'll follow up on. But we're out on a regular basis looking at the drainage outlets and making sure that we're getting those covered. As we have large storms that come through, it does pile up a lot of debris, and many of them throughout the entire city. And we've got a very broad city, so it takes some time to get to all of them. But yes, that is something that we're active on.
Okay. If you're active on it, then why is grass growing in some of the drainage ditches? 15th Street between May Avenue and Agnew, they've actually got grass growing out of there. My neighborhood, which is up around 9th and Robinson, 10th and Robinson, they've still got steel plates on the street. And the drainage ditches there, the collection thing there by 13th--
I just -- we're on beautification right now. We'd be happy -- I know our staff would be happy to sit down.
That is part of beautification, is there's areas in the city that, the reason why they're flooding is because of the drainage system.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we are going to now transition to Item 3C, the State Fair Coliseum. Again, if there's anybody that needs to leave, they're certainly welcome to stay, but they're also okay to step out now. I think we're going to jump right in, not to geek out, but 26 years after the passage of MAPS, and here we are discussing MAPS4, you know, beyond the wildest dreams of those who might have thought about this back in 1992 and 1993. And we are now about to hear from the father of MAPS, and here he is. So Mayor Ron Norrick, I think you're going to start us out on this presentation regarding the State Fair Coliseum.
Yep. Thank you very much. I appreciate Mayor and Council for what you're dealing with right now. We did this about 27 years ago. Not an easy decision, one you're going to, I know, give a lot of thought to. And I see Kenny has left, but I wanted to say hello to Kenny. And of course, Francis, I've already hugged. Francis sat next to me for many, many years and was always poking me when I'd forget something on the agenda. But I'm here as the Chairman of the Board of Oklahoma State Fair, Inc. State Fair, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) that was formed January 1, 1953, to operate the total fairgrounds, which is 435 acres owned by the city of Oklahoma City, for the benefit of the citizens of Oklahoma City, and to create economic development through tourism. As I said, we operate the fairgrounds for the city through a lease that we have with the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, OCPPA, is what you all are all members of that authority. During that time, we have done a diligent job of managing the facilities. We do not require any city budget. We are an income provider to the city in that we provide sales tax through our customers, and we provide hotel motel tax through all the people that come to visit. So we will not be applying for any money through the investment fund. We provide our own funds, we provide our own operating cost, and we have done that for a number of years. I've had the pleasure of serving on the board since 1987, so I've been on 32 years. Currently, the mayor, city manager, sits on our board as ex-official members. That's part of the charter, that each, whoever the current mayor, the city manager, would be sitting on our board. To give you just a little bit of brief history, and make very brief, when MAPS was originally started, the concept some 25 years ago was to improve the quality of life. I grew up in Oklahoma City, went to high school, went to university here, and the places that we used to go when we were in our youth was downtown. There were three movie theaters, multiple hotels where we had our parties for high school, we had our graduations, we had our proms, all of those types of activities. Through urban renewal and a number of other things, deterioration, when MAPS really came about, we had one downtown hotel, and it was not in really good shape. We had, I think, nonexistent downtown housing. Today, we have people living in the core of Oklahoma City, which I think is phenomenal. The neighborhoods around the core of the city are developing. They're lively. What's happening in Midtown? Bricktown, what's happening? The Paseo District, what's happening? The 16th, the Plaza District, where I used to -- I grew up at 11th and Villa, so I know that area, down in that area. But to see what happened, we really did it because we had such a, at the time, the city was in such disrepair, it was going the wrong direction. We had no quality of life for the individuals, for our citizens that were here. And that was the whole purpose of MAPS, was to create a quality of life where people would want to stay, would want to raise their families, their kids, their grandkids. And I think we've accomplished that. Each MAPS has been different. Original MAPS was basically the large public event centers. Next MAPS, MAPS for Kids. MAPS 3 had its character. Obviously, MAPS4 is going to have its character, and I'm forever one of these. I think it makes perfect sense, the direction the city's going. This city has changed. There's no doubt it's changed, and I believe it's changed for the better. And I think all of you would agree that it's changed for the better for all of us. So it's important that we continue that. We're here today to talk about one facility that is a city-owned, public events-type facility. The others that we have taken care of was the ballpark, the library, Civic Center, Music Hall, Convention Center. We've taken care of those facilities. The one left is the Fairgrounds Coliseum. That building is 54 years old. The bones are not good. It is deteriorated me. We have done everything we can. We've hired every engineering firm to see if we could remodel it, we could fix it, we could do anything. It's just to the point that it's not, it is just not repairable. So that's the reason we are here, to talk about that particular facility. Our presentation, which will be brief this morning, will explain what we do in that building, not only for the citizens of Oklahoma City, but for the visitors that come into our community. And that's important. The visitors are the ones that are bringing those new dollars into the city, and it's something that we continue to encourage and want to happen. So with that, let me introduce the President and CEO of Oklahoma State Fair, Inc., and that's Tim O'Toole, who will go through our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Good morning. Or maybe we're getting close to afternoon. We're just glad to be here. We appreciate the opportunity to visit with you and all expand on a few of the things that Ron said and move through our presentation. As we said, as Ron said, the Norrick Arena has been the community anchor of a tried-and-true economic development-through-tourism model that has served the city of Oklahoma City for decades. Replacing, or as we mentioned, replacing or renovating major city facilities is not a new thing. a new thing. It's something Oklahoma City has recognized and done throughout the years. I personally have been involved in MAPS for a long time. I was fortunate enough to take on the job to finish the construction and operate the ballpark for six and a half years when it first opened under the first MAPS, the first major MAPS project. So I understand the importance of what MAPS has accomplished for the City of Oklahoma City. And it is critically important, and I applaud you all for this process you're going through to come up with the appropriate projects. The simple fact of the matter is, as Ron said, that replacing the Norick Arena is an inevitability. Time always wins. That's the reality of it. It's an old building, it's had its troubles. Since 2010, we have been engaged in a thoughtful, methodical, step-by-step process to safely monitor that building, plan for its future, and work with city officials hand-in-hand throughout that process for waiting for the day when the funding opportunity might arise to totally replace the building. We want to replace that building on our time, not on the building's times. It is an integral part of the tourism economy of Oklahoma City. Jason, let's go with this. As Ron had said, the Oklahoma City Fairgrounds operations, it's a 435-acre property owned by the City of Oklahoma City. We management, the company I work for, Oklahoma State Fair, Inc., is a 501(c)(3) organization. As he mentioned, it's been in business well over 50 years. It's actually been in business since statehood. The first state fair was actually held a year before Oklahoma became a state, and there was a charitable organization at that time that was set up that operated the first state fair. Then we have evolved through the years to our present structure as a full-blown event management company. The operating revenue, we pay all the expenses. We pay all the payroll, we pay all the salaries, we pay all the utility bills, everything that goes on at the fairgrounds is paid out of the operating budget of State Fair, Inc. The City of Oklahoma City pays for water and wastewater services. It's 435 acres, we water it, the city pays for the water bill, we hire the people to mow the grass, take care of the grounds, and service all the equipment. Our role, as Ron mentioned, is to create economic development for the City of Oklahoma City through tourism. Technically, there we go. The average life cycle of a public sport event arena is 30 to 40 years. The Jim Norick Arena is 54 years old. By the end of this year, it'll be 55 years old. You can see the style of construction with the monumental columns. Those were worked on in 2008. That's an integral part of this style of construction when it was designed. Those are the cables, those are the concrete panels that create the inverted roof. When it was built, the revolutionary idea of this coliseum was that it was inexpensive and there were no columns. The vision was column-free. That was accomplished by the post-tension cables and the concrete that was spread across it. It is the only building of its style designed as a public event facility that is still in use in North America. In 2017, we developed the plan to start working on the design of a new arena after many studies that were authorized by the Board of Oklahoma State Fair, Inc., to figure out how to best position a new building on the property and not interrupt our existing business. That's critical for the operations of not only the fairgrounds, but also for the tourism economy in Oklahoma City. At that time, as you can see in the memo that was written by the city manager, the statement is made that the building is heavily used and is near the end of its servile life span. We proceeded, as the economic development through tourism, there are approximately 2.1 million annual visitors come through the fairgrounds on an annual basis. 53% of those people are neighbors. They're my fellow Oklahoma City residents and your fellow Oklahoma City residents that use this facility. I wouldn't want to speak for anybody on this council, but I know all of you have had individual experiences at the Norick Coliseum, the big house, as it's called, the high school. I know Councilwoman Nice and I have discussed it, she's been there for graduation activities, basketball championships. Now, Councilman McAteer and I, we've gone to a lot of high school basketball games, hoping our grandkids would someday qualify to participate in the big house, and we're still working on that. But everyone, I think, knows someone that has been to the big house at one time or another. 47% of our guests are out-of-town visitors. A large part of those, some come for the state fair, some come from the, a large part are the equine shows. Oklahoma City is well-known as the horse show capital of the world. We conservatively generate over 170,000 hotel room nights a year. Those visitors are from all 50 states, and last year, we had equine visitors from 20 countries worldwide. And keep in mind, the average stay of an international equine visitor is somewhere between 10 days and 22 days in our economy. So those people come, travel here, get a tremendous impression of Oklahoma City, and stay and spend their dollars here. Total annual direct spending attributed to all the activities at the fairground is That's the largest single economic impact generator of any public facility property that the City of Oklahoma City owns. Total direct spending that's generated from the patrons equates to a minimum of $13 million in annual sales tax revenue directly into the City of Oklahoma City budget. We have events like the Oklahoma State Junior High School Wrestling Championships, the High School Basketball Championships, the Youth Expo. We get youth from 77 counties, all counties in Oklahoma come to Oklahoma City. Sometimes, many of them, that's their first and only impression of our capital city. That'll be the first time they ever come here, and it may be one of the few times they come to Oklahoma City until they grow up to be an adult. We also work with high school graduations. Many of the Oklahoma City public schools utilize the facility for that, as well as OSU, OKC, and you can even see the surrounding schools in the metropolitan area have utilized the facility for high school graduations. The new coliseum is proposed to have 4,725 seats, 2,600 retractable seats, 7,320 total seats, first-class patron amenities. That means these are restrooms, concession areas that the public has become accustomed to in the City of Oklahoma City-owned facilities. As we said before, the consultant architectural firm was hired in 2017. The preliminary design report that they issued under their contract with the City of Oklahoma City was issued in December of 2018. That report estimates $95 billion as a base cost estimate. The site is adjacent to the existing Norick Arena. There'll be no disruption for events. The new facility, when completed, is estimated to generate $230 million annual direct spending and a $400 million annual total economic impact from all the fairgrounds operations. This is a overlay. You'll see this is the existing Norick Arena. This is the location of the new coliseum, what we would call south and east of the building. It will be constructed while the Norick is in use so that we will not disrupt any of our existing business. Tourism is a competitive business. There's no other way to talk about it. You heard some about that yesterday, about the youth soccer events of the people driving from Texas to Kansas and from Kansas through Oklahoma to Texas, you know? One of the good things is our site is currently the host of the Kansas Quarter Horse Association State Championships. They come to Oklahoma City to host that event at our facilities, at the city's facilities at the fairgrounds. Fort Worth, Texas is opening this fall a new $540 million, 16,000-seat arena that is located right in the center of their fairgrounds, at the Will Rogers Center. They are without a doubt our largest competitor for the world-class large shows that we compete with. Dallas, Texas, at the Texas State Fair, they are in the process of authorizing a master plan study to totally renovate their facilities, their fairgrounds, for more activities on a year-round basis from 150, that's estimated to be 150 to 250 million-dollar plan. Tulsa has just completed the final phase of a $90 million renovation of their fairgrounds facilities. They're our largest competitor in the state of Oklahoma for many of our business. Other key cities that we compete with are Albuquerque, New Mexico, Denver, and Louisville, Kentucky. They all have programs in place to look at new or renovated facilities in the next five years. What would happen without a new coliseum? We have many long-term contracts. One of the things that Oklahoma State Fair, Inc., is able to do on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City that the city cannot do because of state law and the obligation of funding is no longer for an annual year. Our board has always encouraged and authorized us, and we go out and make long-term contracts with these horse shows. And we also make long-term contracts with the Oklahoma Secondary Schools Activities Association for the High School Wrestling and Basketball Championships. In those contracts, we guarantee their rental rates, we guarantee their cost. We make a, it's not a Harvard Business School Model 101, but it locks up a lot of hotel room nights that come to Oklahoma City. In the convention world, and that's what we're in, in the tourism world, we're in the convention business, we're competing, dates are everything. The majority of all equine-related and youth-related events are competitive events that start at a certain time of the year, move through the year, and you qualify, and there's a finals at the end of the year. And people want to know where they're going for the finals at the end of the year, and that's what we do. So right now, under contract, we have, at a minimum of three years, we have 120,000 hotel room nights. Up to five and seven years, we have over 150,000 hotel room nights under contract with our existing customers, not new business, to return and come to Oklahoma City. So that's, those contracts, that's why it's so critical that we retire this building on our terms, that we, that's the plans that have been in place for many years to do that. If that were not to occur, there's the potential for the hotels to have significant vacancies. Obviously, the retail and restaurant business would drop, and it would be bad for Oklahoma City's business, for our economy, there's no doubt about it. That concludes our presentation. I would like to say, this is an incredible process you're involved in. I think I figured it up the other day, it's going to be 29 days in length. At the end of those 29 days, your fairgrounds will have made $1,032,756 of sales tax to go back into the city budget. So we'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Tim. I think before we get into questions, I want to talk, this is really the first opportunity I've had in a forum this public to talk about the potential financing of this. As you saw the slide, it's about $95 million cost estimate. You also, you and the mayor both mentioned the hotel motel tax. So when somebody comes to Oklahoma City and stays in hotel, they pay our sales tax, our 8.625, and then on top of that, they pay 5.5% in hotel tax. And the state fair receives 6 elevens. I don't know who, that sounds like a fun negotiation, who divided it into 11.
Well, the fairgrounds receives, the city receives the money. It is designated by the ordinance and the support that the Hotel Association gave. But I think it's important, for some people don't understand, Mayor, in that ordinance, it says that 0% of those dollars go for operational cost of the fairgrounds. That was the arrangement that was made with the Hotel Association when they agreed to support the tax on their customers. But yes, that's correct. But that money goes to the City of Oklahoma City, does not go to the state fair. And then we work with the city to appropriate that money to do capital projects.
Right, right. But ultimately, yeah, to the benefit of the state fair, 6 elevens. Of the fairgrounds, yes. So you do have a revenue stream, and then obviously you also receive dollars from the events you host. And so a few months ago, I approached the mayor and we talked about the possibility of using some of that revenue stream to make this a somewhat unique MAPS IV project potentially in terms of a partnership. And so the way we typically use those dollars is we bond them out, and so they can be spoken for a few years out. But Craig and Tim have worked on this and believe that in 2022, am I remembering correctly, there's some capacity there. And so it's probably premature to talk specific dollars, but it is, but what I'm saying is there is the potential, and I would say the certainty, that if we included this project in MAPS IV, we will not, through MAPS IV, provide the entire $95 million. There will be a significant contribution from the, basically from the hotel tax, and it will be a partnership, and it will help bring that number down from a MAPS IV perspective. You're still looking at a $95 million facility, but I appreciate that you've been open to that conversation and are willing to come to the table, really with everything you've got. People don't have the knowledge that Craig does about our finances, so they may assume there's money there right now. Unfortunately, it is already spoken for through 2022, but MAPS is a long-term process, as I described earlier, and that's right on time to bring some money to the table, and that that offer has been made by the state fair, and I appreciate it, and we're going to continue to work through that.
Yep, I want to verify that. We have been working with the city manager and the mayor, and that is true. We expect through our operations and through the hotel motel tax that we are allowed to use for capital project, we'll be able to make a substantial contribution to the cost that you have seen now. And then 2022, 2023 is about the right timing that you suggested.
Yeah, okay. All right. So with that, questions?
So can I ask, so what projects has that money been used for in the past? What have we been using that on?
Yeah, you're talking about the hotel tax?
Yeah, the 6 elevens.
Okay. The tax, when it was the initial bonding capacity, I believe the initial bonds were about $55 million. And the agreement with, those went direct into starting the improvements for the equine facilities. We were able, because of the bonding capacity that was available for the city, and keeping in mind that you have the state fair in September and the World Horse Show season starts immediately after that in October and runs through December of '15, that we had a window to start and complete construction projects in January, all the way back to August and prior to the state fair. So we were able to schedule out and work on those projects. We started a total renovation. First thing you have to do is, there were a significant amount of utility work that had to be done. Drainage ditches had to be recreated, removed. The old ballpark was still there. It'd been gone for six and a half years, but they never got rid of it, so they left it there for me. And we had to do that, we had to recreate all the parking. There's a lot of underground work that had to be done. And then we started that process. We also had a building that was, many people knew it affectionately, as the Bubble Building. It was an air-compressed air exhibit building that's now called the Pavilion. But when you open the airlock doors, the building was subject to collapsing, and it was not a very efficient building to even be inside of during summertime. So we put a conventional, modern roof on that building. We use it today as one of our exhibit buildings, it's about 70,000 square feet. But it was always our backup plan. But it was always our backup plan, in case a contractor never got a barn finished, that we could use that for stalling if we had to. Fortunately, we never had to. We completed all the projects and moved forward. But the first part of the projects went for the barns. As we, as our business grew, we added two shows that are the two largest youth world horse shows probably in the world, the American Quarter Horse Association Youth World Show and the Arabian Association Youth World Show. The needs of the facilities expanded. We built an outdoor arena. We had an outdoor arena at first, then we went back and covered it. The quarters gave us a longer contract for the youth world. So, the majority of that was used there. Their streets, there's been improvements, there's been RV spaces. There are about 27 to 30 various projects that we have done over the years to, to upgrade the, the fairgrounds recently. Then, as we got through the barns process, we just re-roofed the majority of the buildings that were built in the 60s and 70s that were leaking, and, and were not on the line to be replaced yet. So, I mean, it's been used for capital improvements. Some, some equipment has been bought with those funds, minimal amount of furniture and fixtures, folding chairs and tables for the various buildings. But that's, that's what's, and it's always gone through the Public Works Department and the council for all those improvements.
Thank you. I was just curious, because, and I, I think this is like my greater concern about a lot of the infrastructure that we're, we're thinking about building with MAPS4, and, and what we built with MAPS3 is that when we haven't, and, and you all are a little unique, because you do have a, a funding stream to, to put into that infrastructure over time, but, you know, I think about like the ballpark, if you say 30, 40 years, we're going to creep up on that soon. And I just get curious about, you know, having, or even say like the Chesapeake Arena, or any of these things that operators are, we have private operators for making sure that we're having, whether it's very intentional conversations or requirements of some kind to make sure that they have investment in the infrastructure. Because I think what, what I've been learning is that, you know, it's, I stood in that Jim Mark arena and was like, I don't want to be in here anymore. And like you said, it's kind of about to fall in on itself, and that's a hazard and a liability for the city and for the people, for you all, operating it. But when it, when we're at this critical stage and being able to do these things on our own terms, it seems like outside of you all, we end up having to rely and, and go to general fund and other sources to fund, to, to be able to keep that going forward. So, I appreciate that there's talk about using some of that 6/11ths to kind of partner, but a lot of this, these other projects aren't, don't have that model. And so, I get concerned with, you know, the Whitewater facility, with even thinking about, you know, building affordable housing, even if we're doing these, having these private operators, if, if they go away, or change, or aren't the best operators, they're, they don't have the same buy-in that the city does. And so, the city then ends up being on the hook, and it seems like we, we kind of get, yeah, we're just trying to like fill in the gaps and prop things up until they get to kind of critical stage. So, I'm just, I just want to inject that into the conversation for really all of these projects, but you all are somewhat unique, because you do have a, a funding stream we can partner on. And I'm curious about how we can be having those talks with private operators of maybe other projects that.
And in most of those cases that you called out, that we have operating agreements in a lot of those, but they still remain city-owned buildings, and they're our responsibility to maintain, whether it's through geo-bonds, or it's general fund dollars, like you pointed out, or other revenue sources that are generated associated with those facilities, and this is just another one of those examples, and where that sales, I mean, where that hotel tax revenue is available to help with that now. We currently, I was at, looking at it, we've got about $75 million in outstanding bonds for the improvements on the fairgrounds now. And what we were talking about, having the capacity to be able to help contribute towards the building, is as some of those bonds are paid, it'll give us some capacity to pay it towards that, but we'll still have a very long term still left on some of those bonds.
Well, and see, and that's where I, the part that I get concerned about is, you know, as I think Councilman Cooper has said multiple times in the last few weeks that I've heard, you know, thinking about our basic infrastructure, like our drainage, is $500 million to just do the inner core, like our oldest parts of the city. So, when we're having to use those geo-bonds to do some of these infrastructure improvements, or, or just, you know, keeping things maintained over time, they end up taking precedence over some of those more basic. But as we've heard, you know, very critical pieces of the city, because it does, those dollars then do reverberate in other ways negatively on our, our general fund and on people's, our residents', our residents' incomes. And so, I just, I, I appreciate that we have those other sources like bonds, but, but in building things, we, we then are obligated to keep those things up, rather than some of those basic, but very critical things that I know, you know, knocking doors, I, drainage was the number one thing I heard constantly. And so, I just, even with some of these projects that I'm really passionate about and, and would love to see, when they don't have a promised funding source to, to be able to do some improvements and upkeep over time, I just have a big question mark about, are we going to keep building things? And then those, those basic things that are really high priority in my mind, are they just going to constantly have to be competing with these new things? So, inject that.
And I, and I would say, all valid points, and obviously, we can't speak for the other facilities. We've been fortunate since my time at the fairgrounds. Our board has always authorized, once we set our, cite our reserves for rainy days, because it does rain during the fair, unfortunately, sometimes. But once we set that aside, our board has allowed us to make, to, to invest surplus funds back into the fairgrounds. And since 2004, we have invested a little over $16 million back into the fairgrounds out of our surplus funds, in addition to the other things. Sometimes, it's a little more expedient for us to take care of a problem that we're aware of than it is to go through the process. And there's, I wouldn't want to be presumptuous and guarantee that that will continue, but that certainly has been the philosophy of the Board of Directors, that if they're, they've been very forthright and generous in their approval of, of capital projects that we propose as the, as the staff.
I beat you to it. Thanks for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
You said 13 million in annual tax revenue? Is that correct?
That's right. That's the estimate based off of the economic total number. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Excuse me, Tim. Thanks for your presentation. A writing project I was working on got me learning about the history of this particular building, and Freckles Brown writing the Unrideable Bull Once Upon a Time, that, I know, that's right, little art kid knows some rodeo stuff, too, so. One of the questions I heard from Ward Two residents, and as this particular project has presented itself as a MAPS4 finalist, and maybe it's nostalgia speaking from a lot of these folk, but they miss things like the monorail and the Space Needle. I mean, councilperson, nice, literally like lip synced as I was about, as I said that. And, and when I see that 53%, it's the neighbors, and then the rest is tourism. And I, I love that you all have that tourism model, it's bringing in, you know, sales tax revenue to our coffers to build improved drainage and streets and these sorts of things. I'm just curious what you would say to those residents who long for those sort of projects at the State Fair that would bring them there on a more regular basis outside of just tourism? It's just some, it's something I heard, and it's not even necessarily my generation, right? I, I was just a little bit past the Space Needle, I mean, I saw it as a kid a lot, but these are people in their 40s and 50s and 60s and 70s and 80s, and, and they, they lament that they don't get to show those things to their kids. And I think they just want to hear that you all are, are thinking about them as well. Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Well, I, oh, I've, yes, I've heard from those people. We've had our conversations.
And I just wanted to make sure, I thought it would not, it would not be fair for me as a representative of Ward Two if I did not voice those concerns that I heard, because I share the passion for the work you all are doing. I just want to make sure that those folk are being heard as well.
Well, I've, I've lived in Oklahoma City for 65 years and grew up at 47th and May Avenue. So, I heard the stocks cars race at Taft Stadium, as well as at the fairgrounds. And I miss Sleepy Hollow. I miss Wedgewood Village. I miss Spring Lake Park, but they ran their course. And, you know, Father Time wins. I spent the first 30 years of my business career in the commercial liability insurance field, investigating liability insurance, medical malpractice claims, and then doing risk management for liability exposure. And when things get old and they're at public facilities, they create risk. And I've seen what happens when you don't pay attention to things that are at risk. So, all those items you've discussed and, and other things that we've discussed were thoroughly examined, monitored, thought out. Some were never intended, they were just museum pieces that were given to the city, and there was a place to store them in the 50s or 60s. And as the fairgrounds has evolved into this active tourism generator, people forget that sometime, or maybe they just don't know, and then we understand that. But we have weekends in January, February, and March, from Friday to Sunday, there'll be 50,000 people come and grow off the fairgrounds to go to the various shows that are there, the exhibit shows and the things that are there. I mean, our vendor list for the State Fair is sold out 30 days after the fair. People leave deposits to come back. So, I understand nostalgia. I understand there are things that I miss, that I long for. But at the end of the day, we're folks, we're, we deal with the reality in front of us. Those people that come now and enjoy what's there, the people that put their hard-earned money down to have the opportunity to come back the next year to interact with consumers on the property, so, and, and things, unfortunately, the arch, perfect example, same problem with the Space Needle. Don't particularly discuss all these things a lot, but don't forget, the arch was a public structure that people pass under. Eight, 900,000 people pass under it during the State Fair. It blew down. It blew to the ground. Fortunately, it was 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning. There was no one on the fairgrounds, but it blew down. You can imagine what that would have happened on a Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday. So, that's our job. That's my job. That's our responsibility to the city of Oklahoma City, is to maintain those assets. And when we see problems with those assets, we have the resources to contact the appropriate people and the city engineers and work with Public Works to address those situations. And unfortunately, they happen in old, in old things. I can tell you some stories about the monorail that occurred in my first year that I was counting the days until the, the fair closed, because I can assure you, the monorail was never coming back. It was, you know, look at history, the Space Needle, as a ride, was shut down for three days, the first fair it ever opened at. So, it had operational problems from a public safety risk standpoint from the day it started. Same thing with the monorail. It broke down the first year with the fairboard on, on it. I'm glad I wasn't there then. So, I, I understand those concerns, and.
I appreciate.
And they're valid, they're valid, I, I get it. I have things I miss.
I appreciate you speaking to them.
Sure.
I, I promise you, the people out there with those, those concerns, appreciate you speaking to them as well.
True, my pleasure.
Mayor Norick, thank you for crafting a, a way in which for us to continue to invest in improving the quality of life for our people. Thank you.
Got some?
Yes, I just wanted to say, as we're looking holistically at what the possibilities of this Coliseum would look like, as we saw in the presentation, the many things that already occur, and, and to your point, as he made me think about that, is he said the things that happened, I, I've been one of those thousands or hundreds that stood in line to go to the book sale that they have, and among many other things that we have to expose us as a city, as well as a state, to what the Coliseum can bring. And I, in my mind, when I think about it, I think about the young people when they have those, those tournaments, and when they have the graduations, they deserve some decency in the graduation. And when I was in high school, we had to have our, at Northeast High School, we had our graduation at the Civic Center. And I don't recall now any graduations that are there, and I could be very mistaken, but I've, I've been to at least a few at, at this location for the, for the State Fair. And I, I think, especially with them putting skin in the game with this, it, it makes it look a lot better than we assumed in some aspects. And I, I think with this, again, Coliseum, bringing people not only from across this state every year, once a year, bringing people across this nation many times a year, and now being internationally known, it, it means something when we have places like this that we can invest in to show what 435 acres look like that's owned by the city of Oklahoma City. So, I, I understand the costs, and I think we're all concerned about those things, but I, I think as we're looking forward and, and working with those numbers, it, it looks better than I think we expected.
Great. Okay, we have got about 15 people who have signed up to speak. So, here's what we're going to do. It's 12:15, there's a planning commission in here at 1:30. We take precedence, but we're, it's going to start getting tense around here. So, all, the rules of the game are printed right on the yellow sheet you filled out. It's three minutes, and I've been somewhat kind about that today, but that, that kindness has evaporated now. So, you get your three, because that was the deal, the contract we have here between us, and is represented on this yellow sheet. But at three minutes, no matter how close we are, no matter how much we have been friends for years, I'm going to say your name and cut you off immediately. And so, if you want to avoid that tension in our relationship, keep your remarks to three minutes, and, and, or shorter, because profound things can be said in merely 30 seconds, I assure you. I bet every substantive thing has probably already been uttered today on this topic. So, Mike Carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not even going to open my notebook. I'll, I'll go with the three minutes. I'm Mike Carrier, President of the Convention Investors Bureau and Resident of, of Ward One, to comment that, that Councilwoman Hammond made a few minutes ago, just a fact for you all to remember. When someone comes here for a horse show or any other event, their spending, the average spending that they have while they're here, only 12.5% of that is for a hotel room. It is taxable for hotel tax, city sales tax, state sales tax. The other 87.5% that they spend while they're here is predominantly taxable for city sales tax. So, don't forget that the hotel tax, while it's important, is only one part of this whole equation, and the spending rolls throughout a lot of our economy. What Tim has talked about in terms of the horse shows, we travel all over the country and around the world selling Oklahoma City. We go to Germany every other year for a major show. While we're there, people want us, want to know about Oklahoma, they want to know about the Native American population, and they want to know about the horse shows. The largest, fastest-growing breed. horse shows. The largest, fastest growing breed of horses in Europe is the American quarter horse. Guess where they found out about that? Oklahoma City. The other thing that I would say to you, and Councilwoman Nice just kind of gave the lead into this. Every day, and at least every, a lot of times every day, but every week, I get asked a very simple question because of the new convention center. What are they going to do with the old convention center? The arena in the old convention center, the exhibit hall? And my answer very simply is this. That's a public policy decision that the city's going to have to make. The follow-up to that, that from most people is, well, obviously, they're going to tear it down. Why would we need to keep it? And I'm not here advocating keeping it, but remember that there's an arena in that facility that does still host high school graduations and other local events, much more so than tourist events that come here. We're going to need a replacement for that arena as well as the Norick Arena. But we only need one arena. And almost everything that is done in the, in the convention center, the Cox Center Arena, could easily be transferred to this new arena at the fairgrounds, which gives you an opportunity to make a, a big difference in the city in coming years. Thank you for your consideration of this and your constant support of tourism. Mr. Mayor, I see the yellow paper. I've got a good story to tell you about that sometime when we have, when we have the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Jeff Penner. And after, so you can position yourself, after Jeff will be Stan Mori.
Start your timer. Thank you, Mayor, Assistant City Manager and members of the council. State Fair Park is the lifeblood of the hotel industry in Oklahoma City. 5,000 rooms in their proximity is not an accident. It must remain the horse show capital of the world, and a fully funded coliseum will make sure that that happens. It's an undisputed fact that many millions of multiplier tax dollars flow into the city coffers because of the success of State Fair Park and the many events that it hosts. Of all the MAPS projects, I believe that State Fair Park gives you the greatest return on your MAPS investments. The infrastructure that has been mentioned a lot this morning, this is how you can pay for that infrastructure. This project has one major difference of other proposals, and that is that it's an impact to not only our citizens here in Oklahoma City, but to every citizen of our state. The big house is part of our history, a rite of passage. I grew up in rural Oklahoma in the memories of state basketball tournaments, state wrestling tournaments, stock shows is a part of my heritage. I think it would be interesting to know the amount of tax, MAPS tax dollars that are collected by these rural people that actually come to Oklahoma City. This coliseum gives not only the citizens of our city, but everyone in our great state a much needed facility who also contribute to that tax. With that said, a sincere thank you for your time and consideration this morning. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Stan Mori, and after that will be Randy Ward.
Good afternoon. I'm Stan Mori. I'm the Judges and Sturges Commissioner for the Arabian Horse Association. The reason I, when they asked me to come down and speak today, I've been a part of this association, the Arabian Horse, the equine industry here in Oklahoma City for 40 years. I, we brought the youth nationals back here, and it starts next week. One of the things that, when I was part of this fact finding commission, to go look at other places all over the country, I'm biased towards Oklahoma City, I've always been that way. But we were in Albuquerque, New Mexico. We, we got it pushed through to move back here. The number one factor for moving back here was safety. Albuquerque, New Mexico, the position of their fairgrounds was in a bad part of town. This used to be a bad part of town. I can remember that. But the safety of this fairgrounds and the continued improvements that they do, and the way that they conduct themselves, that's what made my association want to come here. I think that's the same thing with all of the associations that do this in this, in the equine industry. Oklahoma City continues to move forward. They move the ball forward. And that's the biggest part of this situation. When you start taking into consideration the amount of dollars that are brought in by the equine industry, I understand all that, but I also understand this. The quality of life, the way that they do, the way they conduct themselves, and the security that's in that, in that fairgrounds is an integral part of this thing. I implore you to, to move forward with this thing, if you will. But I also know this much. This is, right now, the best facility in the country. There are others that are coming up on it, but right now, this is the best facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Ward, and then following that will be Gary Carpenter.
Thank you. Randy Ward, private citizen, 1-2624 Steve Drive, and that house number tells you how far out in Ward 4 I live. We've supported, my family and I have supported MAPS since the first one. Skeptical about the second one. Full in on the third one. And I think most of us will vote for this one. But MAPS is always about trust. Trust in the council, trust in the people implementing it. These proposals are really vague. The numbers are vague. The, you know, up here it says first class patron amenities. That's pretty vague. But we put trust in the city council that they will do these. And even though when we get ready to vote for it, it's going to be even more vague. But that's fine. But I've lost trust in the fairgrounds, only because that space tower, the Space Needle, for 10 years it's sit there. And so for 10 years, while they've been planning this arena, they never noticed they had a, what was it, 100 something foot tall tower in the middle of the fairgrounds. Wasn't painted, wasn't maintained. And then last, I guess 20, early 2018, they decided to structure. But it's not torn down for a year. We had a skyscraper in downtown Oklahoma City have windows blown out. Things happen. Something could have happened to it. But for a million bucks, there's your city beautification. You could see it for miles. So I'm just saying, I would hope that the city council, the mayor, everyone, and I do support it, we do need an arena. I'm not saying, I do support the coliseum. I just think that the fairgrounds does not have a great record in implementing and maintaining our city property. Thank you.
Thank you. And your comments about, you know, the level of detail bringing to mind a couple of things I think are important to say. I've said this at the last meeting too. A lot of decisions are made after the vote. And that's why we have a citizen advisory board, you know? We get to a nittier, grittier level of detail. Also worth mentioning is, if you want vague, you should read the MAPS III resolution that the council adopted. I don't know if it's even 100 words long. And I think we'll have something more detailed here that, that may not be the square footage of the arena, but it will be, it will be something that a little bit meatier that you can hang your hat on. Okay, Gary Carpenter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And after that will be Michael Washington.
I'll do my best to respect your time limit. I grew up in Quantico, Texas. There's only a certain level of rate of speed I can, at which I can speak. I read years ago where the great Oklahoman, Jim Sholder, said, "Slow talking don't mean slow thinking." And I've clung to that desperately my whole life. Thank you for allowing me to speak about this important facility, a little bit about the National Raining Horse Association. That's who I represent. Our major event, our fraternity, has been here since 1986. Our association headquarters moved here in 1996. We employ 25 people in that building that the city owns and that the good people to fair lease to us out on West Reno. So we're, we feel very much because our events are here, because our staff's here, enmeshed in this community and proud to be. A little bit on economic development. It's been estimated that our fraternity generates $79 million in turnover for this community. And you've heard all about the hotel rooms, and that's all true. I will add to what Tim said about the competitive nature of facilities, horse show facilities. As you saw, Fort Worth has just doubled down. Denver is adding to their acreage footprint, they're, and investing in another 500 million in that facility. They were behind. We have pressure from Scottsdale. Our facility, and trust me, this is not a threat. I, this is just an illustration. Our, our show used to be at the Ohio State Fairgrounds in Columbus, and they've just gone into an extensive renovation program as well. So there's a lot of competition out there. That's the economic part of it. More on the, what I would say would be the cultural side of it. Tim referenced 20 countries. We have, NRHA is truly an international association. Now, I'll just tell you one story to help illustrate that. We have, we sanctioned 900 events worldwide. We hold four ourselves, two in Oklahoma City, one in Germany, one in Italy. About five years ago, I was at our premier event in Germany, and I was astonished that the gentleman who rode that winner and trained it was a Canadian who trained out of France. The horse was owned by some people from Sweden and was bred in Texas by an Italian family. You know, if that's not international, I don't know how international you can get. And in my travels in Europe, I hear people talk about, oh, yeah, I'm going to go to the States, and I'm going to go to Orlando or Las Vegas. Personally, those are somewhat repugnant to me. But people in our sport know Oklahoma City because of this facility, because of our events. And I think culturally, the understandings we get from other people, what's going on with their politics.
Gary, if you could just wrap it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My final point, I'm not from here. I said that. But I'm so impressed with the way this community works together, and I thank you for that as a citizen.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Michael Washington, and after that will be David Namatpar.
2900 Northeast 18th Street. Seems to me, Mayor, that you're quite optimistic about this gentleman's presentation here. It seems like to me, sir, that you are backing this 100%, even though you stayed with this 2023 type of approval, what have you. Well, let me get to a little bit of startling facts where you sort of let you know, you're talking to one of the people that listens to people when they talk. Now, number one, first of all, so I wasn't here, and you do, you, for my, my mayor, you've done a great job as well, sir. Now, let me say one thing here. First of all, I wasn't here again when all this started place. But what first, I want to know, since I don't obviously visit these places much, I know I've got a little timeframe, who owns the coliseum, the Jim Norick Coliseum Arena? Okay, now, and who owns the fairgrounds? Park? The city? Good. Now, I like that point. Now, the city owns this, these operating facilities, I'm told. Now, and I'm told, you get $13 million a year back from approximately $326 million and plus surplus operation costs to operate, and the money that they're pulling in. Okay, that being the case then, sir, it seems to me if you're getting $13 million back, and from, for the most part, for them to operate the fairgrounds then, it seems like to me that that's not enough money coming back, since you already own the property that you obviously are leasing to someone to do, conduct your business for you then, right? So then Michael Washington wants to know then, and it's the beginning of time, which I was, would start beginning more appropriately now, since you kind of like these projects, only for that reason alone. I'd like to know too, sir, according to this gentleman back here, the fairgrounds is situated on a 435 acre lot, or what have you. And again, I'm not into agriculture, however. Now, the Fairgrounds Incorporated is a 501(c)(3). Okay, now with this 501(c)(3) then, sir, then again, the gentleman who just spoke said that they also extending other properties out. Now, it seems like to me for them to be coming for a $90 million project here, estimated cost for a contractor to build this new coliseum for them, it seems like to me to be quite unusual, since again, they already have all this bulk of money that I can't believe that it's already not clearly shown where that money already steps, when they just giving you $13 million a year. And again, on the 2019, you're going to be getting approximately $1,327,000 of that coming in. I don't know which payment that would be. But let me say this here as well here. Sir, you're doing a great job, I believe. But I believe that you can independently, on your own, and oh, by the way, Mayor, it seems like this is double, double standard here. Okay, you already own the city, the city owns these, these two projects, these two companies or grounds. Then it seems like it would be twofold. Oh, the yellow paper didn't come up. Oh, God, I got to get, I don't respect that.
30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds. Oh. So anyhow, it seems like it's twofold here, since you already own these properties that these people are leasing from you to manage it for you. Okay? It seems like me then, that the 45 million, you'd be going to get an increase if you do loan money term then, right? More than 13 million a year, you're going to be an increase to it then? If you give them 45 more, or at least half of what they're asking for? Is that right?
You got 10 seconds.
Okay. Well, again, we'll leave it at that, and I'll just do a little more investigation. Thank y'all very much, and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. David Namatpar, followed by Joy Reardon.
Hello, my name is David Namatpar, Oklahoma City. I just wanted to read something real quick to y'all before I begin. Plans call for a modern coliseum with more than 4,700 fixed seats, 2,600 retractable seats, and premium amenities such as suites, box seating, and club opportunities. And that's from the website that's supportive of this project. I come to speak out against it because I find that, you know, we're being asked to fund this project, and it keeps going on about hotels and the horse industry. I don't know if y'all have ever actually, if you've been to the State Fair Park recently, but I mean, it's not something to be very proud of, to be honest. It's frustrating that there's only one way in and out of that whole place, even, I mean, I don't know if that's the same, be said for one of those events. But there seems to be only one entrance. And like some people have said, you know, they had The Arch, they had The Tower. And while I understand, you know, supposedly they have reliability issues, my main point is, those were kind of landmarks to Oklahoma City. Was the cost prohibitive to repair them? Like, why do we always tear down stuff that we can, you know, seed repair? My next point is that some people say, well, we, we feel safe at the State Fair Park after dark. It used to be a bad part of town. I personally have been there after dark. I mean, yes, some of the parking spots are really well lit, but I've also been where it's 4th of July celebration, and I had to park out north of it in the dirt and wait for hours because it, you know, traffic, which is fine, that's not really well lit. I'd also like to draw attention, you know, it's kind of funny to me, we give them so much money to manage and everything. It is the city's property. If you go to the bandstand, it's just north a little bit, it's rundown. It's kind of embarrassing, to be honest, because it has, you know, has seats there that, if you look at them, probably haven't been moved for several years. It's weathered. It's embarrassing. You know, why are we, you know, and like, it's like, like the, the website says, why do you need club seating for arena? I mean, that's kind of being, you know, are people going to have to pay more to sit there? Is it going to be reserved, like, you know, the Chesapeake for different companies? I mean, is that something we can use? Is that a wise use of taxpayer money? Like Mrs. Hammond said, you know, with the flooding issues, with the, I mean, it's great to have this thing, but if you can't get there, you know, without driving, and, you know, if it's raining, you had to hope to God it's not, your street's not flooded. I mean, is this the best thing? You know, look at the things they're already in charge of. Are they taking care of it? If they're not taking care of it, like the bandstand, then why should we give them more money or, you know, even use MAPS for this project? Like, some people said, they could bond it out later on, which is great. But I guess my point is, is look into their finances, look into see, would this be the best use of taxpayer money that everybody has to pay in Oklahoma City for the next 10 years? Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Reardon, followed by Scott Crossley. Joy's not in the room. Scott Crossley then, followed by Brent Kennedy.
Hello. Thanks for hearing me today. I'll promise I'll be less than three minutes. I have a commercial lending supply off South and Redding and 36. When events are at the fair, our business kicks up tremendously. We serve restaurants and hotels and that sort of business. We need to replace the arena with a coliseum to ensure we continue to have the shows and to bring in new business as well. I first went to the arena when I was six to watch the Blazers. It's nostalgia, yes. But this will be progress and helping improvement. Plus, it brings you a lot of tax money. So, looks like a win-win to me. Thanks for your time.
Pithy. Thank you. Perfect. Brent Kennedy, followed by David Jackson. No Brent? Okay. David Jackson, followed by Tyler Norvell.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I am the Executive Director of the Secondary School Activities Association, the body that governs high school activities. And for as long as the Fairgrounds Arena has existed, they have hosted our state high school basketball championships. And over that period of time, And over that period of time, you know, lots of, and some of you have already spoken to it, lots of memories, lots of tradition has been established over those 50 years. The challenge for us as the body who finds those venues for state championships has come from those 16, 17, 18-year-old kids who, right now, don't understand the tradition of the big house. So all they want is the pretty shiny venue to play their championships in. Now, we've got a lot of people, and most of you at some point have probably been to a state basketball championship where you find people that's played there, has attended those championships for several years, that they are mainstays. They're gonna be there. You know, it's almost like a new iPhone coming out. People will camp out to get their seats at the Fairgrounds Arena during those three weeks of high school championships. But again, the challenge for us is is the desire of some people, the younger generation, to be in that shiny facility. We think the new arena, the new Coliseum, will allow us to have both. We can maintain that tradition that's been established over those 50 years as well as allow our students to play in the best facility that we can provide. So we certainly encourage support of the new arena and the new Coliseum, and appreciate you giving us this time to speak on its behalf.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for the partnership that we have there, and as well, other speakers who represent people who use that arena. It's also a good, you know, this was already brought up, but what the Norick Arena means to kids across the state, both in context of your basketball tournaments, but also in the context of the Youth Expo. It's like Mecca for a kid in Alva, you know? And a lot of people in Oklahoma City don't know that, right? Because they don't, that's not their experience.
It really is, and in those three weeks, we've added the wrestling championships too, Mayor. And in those three weeks, as has been mentioned already, people from every corner of Oklahoma come to Oklahoma City. A lot of people will schedule vacations around the wrestling tournament and the basketball tournaments because of the tradition that lives there.
Thank you.
And I want to thank people all across Oklahoma for baking delicious-looking peanut butter cookies and all kinds of food at that expo. I'm telling you, I'm so, it makes me so proud when I see all the crafts, the sewing, it makes me so hungry I have to go eat an Indian taco. So no, it is, it's a gem for across the states.
Is Tyler Norvell here still? Okay. Well, Tyler represents the Youth Expo, another major tenant, and something that we're very proud that we host here in Oklahoma City. Well, that concludes all the speakers for the State Fair Coliseum project. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, everybody who was patient today, and appreciate you all. And we will now transition to Item 3D on the agenda, Senior Wellness Centers. So again, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to wander out, that's quite all right.
Thanks.
All right, we're gonna get started again with Item 3D, Senior Wellness Centers. David Todd's giving the presentation. If there's a project we're familiar with, it's Senior Wellness Centers. This is, at least at this stage, is contemplated as simply a continuation of what we've done in MAPS III. That's worth certainly exploring, but that's what we assumed was the idea here. You know, they've proven popular, and I think David will talk about remaining needs that might exist after the conclusion of MAPS III. So David?
Thank you. David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. As the mayor said, in MAPS III, there was $52 million that was dedicated to four wellness centers. Status on those right now, Senior Wellness Center number one was completed in February of 2017. Senior Wellness Center number two was completed in May of 2018. And then Wellness Centers three and four are both in site selection. Architects have been selected, and a design will begin very soon. As far as the programming and things that are in Senior Wellness Center number one, so you have just general social interaction. You have exercise, which includes weights, pickleball, dance, those kind of activities. Then you have the aquatic activities, which includes free swim and water aerobics. There's art activities, there's yoga. This list isn't meant to include absolutely everything they do down there. I would have to use three or four slides if I listed everything they do. But in general, these are the kind of things that Wellness Center One is doing. And then they have a small health clinic. It's really just two rooms that they use for health screenings and those kind of activities. Their membership, as of December 2018, is 6,006 people. Real quickly, some photos of Wellness Center One, if you haven't seen it. And Wellness Center number one is located at about Northwest 116th and North Rockwell. The interior, this is the entry. So you have the social area that you can see. There's a cafe on the right. Back to the left, down that hallway, there's pool tables in that storefront area there. There's a large divisible meeting room. There is a demonstration kitchen. There's the art room and restrooms and those kind of things down that hall. And there's a picture of the art room. They have a retired Putnam City art teacher who teaches art there. Each of the wellness centers has a pool. This is the pool at Wellness Center number one. It is a combination lap and therapy pool. It is saltwater. And I'd like to just point out on that back wall there is the 1% for art that I think just turned out wonderful. Pickleball, we've heard about already in the last, this session and the last. Very popular there. They've set up three courts, but this is their full gymnasium that they have. Also able to do meetings in there or play basketball or any kind of other activities that would require a large room. Wellness Center number two, again, very similar activities that you can see on there. The only real difference between one and two is the health clinic. So Wellness Center number two took some of their space and used it for a larger health clinic. So they have nine exam rooms and a full pharmacy in there. Their membership as of May of this year is 1,030 persons. Exterior view of that, this is located at Capitol Hill High School campus, which is at about southwest 40th and South Walker. Again, a very similar entry. There's the check-in desk, there's a cafe on the right. Probably the main difference in this one also is that it has a second floor where the running track is. Social area, good view. Also a meeting room, divisible in half. They have a full kitchen in addition to their demonstration kitchen. And you can see their gymnasium is substantially smaller. As I said, they use that room to put it into the clinic area because each of these facilities are approximately 40,000 square feet each. They're all the same size, and the operator can determine, based on their mission and the surrounding community, how they want to use that space. Workout area, you can see the track I mentioned up on top. And this is their pool, same-sized pool. Also a combination therapy and lap pool, saltwater. Now, I'll show you this slide, and I want to make sure everybody understands that there are two locations of wellness centers here that are theoretical right now. They're still in decision-making process of where they will stay. But the top-left one is Wellness Center number one. The one in the middle there is Wellness Center two. So I've located in general area Wellness Center three in northeast Oklahoma City, in general area of where it's been discussed. And then Wellness Center four is down at the bottom. And regardless, you can see that there's still a large part of the city that isn't covered in either a three-mile or a five-mile radius from each of those wellness centers. So the red line represents a five-mile radius, and the green is the three-mile. So like I said, you can see that there's still a lot of areas that aren't covered.
You know, David, it seems to me, while we're on here, it feels like I should make the comment, you know, that the, especially when you look at the green lines, that the most populated area that clearly has a gap is near northwest.
In this, yes, it does. Well, that's it. Very short. I believe the proposal is to add two more wellness centers?
I mean, it's, you know, in some level, it's an arbitrary number, right? What we come up with, where we see the needs. I pointed that out because you can, I can see one need, for sure, but there's probably more, you know? And so, you know, two's what's been thrown around, but that's something we can continue to discuss. But today was really just to lay the foundation for the continuation of the program.
Okay.
Lashane Commercial. Ward three is one of those areas out in the southwest that does not have coverage right now. And that area is very rapidly developing, especially with senior adults who are moving out there to senior areas for their retirement. So, get that in. Thank you, David.
Commercial noted. Thank you.
Just a quick question. What is the budgetary amount for each Senior Wellness Center?
Well, they vary because of the way they were spread out over the implementation plan over several years. But the Wellness Center four is about $14.5 million.
Thanks.
Thank you for your presentation. My hope would be that should this project become part of MAPS IV, that we take into consideration those in our city in the most need when it comes to physical, mental health outcomes. That should, in my mind, be a priority. And I think there are some areas in that gap, that northwest corridor there, that fits that mold. And I would strongly, strongly, strongly encourage us to look at county from, excuse me, to look at data from Oklahoma County Health. Whoever has those statistics, it can help us figure out where it makes the most sense to place those, to help those who need it the most.
Right, and that is, has been a tool that the subcommittee has used in locating these facilities and continuing on, is the health outcomes in those areas based on those statistics that you mentioned.
I always understand that previously it was based more on the proximity to operators?
Well, that is true. The first one, when we first started off, it was based on finding an operator. But now, subcommittee is looking more at some of those health outcomes.
Well, wonderful. I look forward to seeing more of that. Thank you so much.
It seems like we've got more operators interested now than we did eight years ago. You know, we finally got the Y, for instance, involved. And that was, 10 years ago, people thought, oh, the Y will run all these, and they didn't really see, have interested in it until recently.
When we started, we really didn't know what they were. You know, we took a while to develop that and for people to understand what they are. And you're right, we have gotten better response.
Well, I would like to see with this how we can better offset some of those costs to the possibility of... Oh, duh, that's not it. I had the button on. Offset the costs, because when we're looking at the operators and even the fees that are now going to be inquired by these centers, that's a concern for some of our most vulnerable because they are on limited incomes, a lot of them, not all. But some of them have to rely on different things in order to make it work for them. So I would like to see how maybe we could figure out some kind of, I don't know, I don't want to say endowment, but some type of way for us to make sure operating costs can stay at a minimum where our seniors or our most vulnerable are not being used to offset those costs when it comes to even operators, when we have operators that can no longer possibly provide for these centers. Or, you know, we've been lucky in a couple, but, you know, we still have some challenges when we're looking at the possibility of what it may look like for a couple of different centers. So there's still challenges even with that, so we may want to just look at that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, David.
Thank you.
We have a few people who signed up to speak. First is Dr. Jason Sanders from the University of Oklahoma. And I know enough about this to know that Dr. Sanders has, and the university have some thoughts that they'd just like us to consider moving forward in terms of a potential future wellness center. And I'll, unfortunately, we've got a nice number here. You've heard my previous admonitions, so hopefully you can blow through this. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. Thank you, City Councilors. I know you've had a long morning, so I will be brief. My colleague, Dr. Stephen Prescott from Oklahoma Medical Research Foundation, couldn't join me here today since his regrets, as the mayor said, on Provost OU Health Science Center and the Vice Chair of OU Medicine. I think to build on the earlier comments, we looked at the proposal of the Senior Wellness Centers in MAPS IV and the foundation that the council is considering. Wanted to come forward with an interest in potentially operating one of the wellness centers. And wanted to highlight a few of those concepts today, which connects with centers in MAPS III, but also uses some of our unique capabilities. What we would be interested for you to consider for one of the future MAPS IV centers, and which we might play a role, is a center that serves all of the other geographically-based centers that's focused on healthy aging, in particular, healthy brain aging and Alzheimer's disease. OU, along with OMRF, is one of only six centers in the country that has a Nathan's Shock Research Center. OU has also operated the Oklahoma Healthy Aging Initiative based upon a Reynolds Foundation grant for a number of years. We have expertise in clinical trials and a number of disease areas. And in brief, what we propose is to look at your models currently, certainly with a sense of socialization, of inviting our seniors into a specialized center, connecting it with clinical care, but in particular, connecting it with clinical trials. Some of the handouts we share with the council highlights the burden of Alzheimer's disease and related ones for Oklahoma Cityans and the state. And it's a difficult, not only for patients, but for caregivers. So we're very much interested in engaging with patients in the community in these centers with research. The last thing I'll say is, as you consider the overall budget and you go forth through the process and the vote, after the vote with the Citizens Advisory Board, our capital request would likely be higher than ones you funded historically, principally due to our proposal for co-locating advanced imaging, spectral CT, MRI in the centers, simply because if we could make clear diagnosis directly at the bedside, that would be our goal. But Alzheimer's disease-related ones have been difficult to diagnose in that manner, and we're really interested in imaging capabilities to help us. So I will pause there in the interest of time. We can, we thank you for your time this morning.
Way to go. Very short. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Any questions for him? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Schmidt.
I participate in many of the free and low-cost senior programs at Will Rogers and Woodson's Active Senior Citizen Centers. The more we do to keep our seniors active and living in their homes reduces the drain on taxpayer dollars for long-term health care and other issues. I wanted to commend a longtime employee of the city, Douglas Paulson. He has run the Woodson and Will Rogers Senior Citizen Centers. He is amazing in the programs he initiated and the sense of community that he's brought to the seniors of Oklahoma City. His innovative programming and goodwill that he's fostered for years can be destroyed very easily by putting somebody in charge who does not have the same approach to programming that he has. So I hope that we will continue to keep the programs affordable and relevant, and that we search for people like Doug Paulson. we search for people like Doug Paulson to run those programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenyon Morgan.
I first would like to say how glad I am to see the council members now and how diverse you are. Actually, my wife served for Mayor Lattin's assistant, and so I've watched this council for a long time, and I'm very happy to see what's going on right now. I also commend you, David, for the process here. I was a presenter, I was one of the presenters for the senior wellness centers. I don't know how many years ago it was. I think Sam Bowman and I, and maybe Blair Schrobe, made a presentation. It was to one person, Mr. David Holt, who was the mayor's assistant. So the openness of this process is just so wonderful. I'm very happy about that. And I have also served on the senior wellness committee, and so I've sort of watched this happen. And I must, I think the city has done a very good job at administering MAPS and the whole process, but I must say, I am a little concerned about the, when you start doing a, these social centers like the wellness centers, I think you need to look at a, sort of a new process of how you administer this. Honestly, I think the idea that you hire, immediately hire an oversight architect, that really worked against us on the senior wellness centers. And I am an architect, but the architect then, when we said we wanted some programming, the architect immediately started thinking architectural programming. And quite honestly, we paid $200,000 for a architectural program, space program, that could have been taken out of a textbook. The programming we need is really, where can we, where can we get funding to pay for not only the centers like the northwest one, but the centers like the one that is near Capitol Hill? And I think there's an opportunity there to, you know, work with the state health department, work with the National Institute of Health, work with the National Institute of Aging, and that's the type of programming that's needed for this MAPS project and for the continuation of that. And I certainly welcome the doctor here. Frankly, we looked for someone like that when we started this and made some contacts with the University of Oklahoma, the school over there, and we were not able to make a connection. But I think part of it is that we were just volunteers, but I think, I think either the city needs to hire someone or go to some of the foundations here in Oklahoma City to partner early on to say, how do we really make this work? How can we bring in more resources? Because I know there's, Mike here has served the older people and people in health needs all their life, and I know there's a, okay, I'll stop.
Thirty seconds.
But, all right, I'm just saying, there's a need to sort of look at this in a different capacity than just automatically hire an oversight architect. I'm an architect, I'm, but, you know, this is more of a programming people thing rather than just a, just an architecture thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenyon.
And I want to thank him for that, because I totally agree. And that's one of the things that we've done, even with Wellness Center Number Three. We went back to the seniors and said, okay, let's go look at Senior One, and let's go look at Senior Center Two, and tell us what you want to see in this wellness center to come. So that's one of the good things that has been able to come out of that.
I definitely appreciate that. And frankly, it needs to be, I'm with the Harding Charter School, and we just got, worked with the Oklahoma City School Board to buy the Harding building for the Fine Arts Academy. And again, I think this idea of locating these, the youth parks, the youth centers with the schools can be so much more productive if you really thought about than having four big centers around the city. So, but I think this is how MAPS needs to be looked at, not just, hey, okay, let's use the process that we've used for the first three MAPS, but now we're sort of changing gears here. So I just want to be a part of that discussion, because I think it will result in much better results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Dover. Mike has, of course, done yeoman's work this last decade, is the chair of the MAPS Three Citizen Advisory Board on Senior Wellness Centers. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Holt, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Although I happen to serve on that subcommittee, of course, my visit with you guys this morning has, is personal, has nothing at all. I'm not representing that committee in any way. I just want to make that clear. What can I say? I've spent a career in primary health care and community health centers, working with primarily low-income families. I will tell you, my passion about these senior wellness centers has to do with the importance they are and should be and can be to this community. As a state, you guys know, we've seen the list. Oklahoma traditionally is at the top of the bad list and at the bottom of the good list. We, for many years, hover around forty-seventh, forty-sixth, as low as forty-eighth. That's bad. But you know what's worse? As a city, last fall, there was an article in Newsweek Magazine that ranked Oklahoma City as the unhealthiest city in America. By the way, Tulsa was number ten worst. I say that to say, the way we are going to begin, I think, to change health outcomes in our community is to go in those communities where the health outcomes are the poorest. It's duh, it just makes common sense to me. Having said that, I'd like to kind of spend just a minute or two, and I hope I don't exceed my three minutes, unless I already have.
Got a minute and a half.
That, when we take a look at the two centers that we currently have, we have Center Number One that is located in, according to the city-county health department, that has the sec, that the tenth highest health outcomes, right? So they're pretty good shape. In fact, the median income for families in that, in that part of, that zip code is exactly, is $67,000. Compare that to Wellness Center Number Two, which is located in the forty-third worst outcome, or zip code. And by the way, they're fifty-six in Oklahoma County. So we got number ten, number forty-three. We got obviously a pretty stark contrast. If we look at the success of those centers, it, of course, is because in Center Number One, it is located in a community where people understand, they believe, and they participate in things like exercise, dieting, and congregation. The second center located in one of the poorest areas in Oklahoma City, I see it, Mayor. But this is really so important. Some of the poorest health outcomes, of course. If you look at their membership dues to help operate the facility, Center Number One received $820,000 last year in a twelve-month period. Of course, many and most of those dues were paid at the $30 limit for an individual or a $50 for a month, I should say, for an individual, or $50 for a married couple. They have a lot of members. Someone said six thousand members. You look at Center Number Two, where they're only seeing a thousand members, they only gained $107,000 in membership fees. Now, of course, their population is a lot smaller, but, but the bad news is that forty-three, forty-seven percent of those monthly dues are people that are paying $5 a month. You can see, do the business plan. The reason that I'm afraid that people are going to be interested in looking at wellness centers in areas that have the highest, higher health outcomes is because they also are be able, in the business model, be able to afford to operate them. So what I suggest that you guys look at is a way to perhaps provide some dollars available that might go toward helping those centers that are serving those patients that can't afford to pay those full membership fees. Take a number. Let's say, for instance, instead of the two wellness centers, we did one wellness centers in MAPS Four, and we took, and we took that money, we took $20 million and set it aside, that'd be $800,000 under the 4% interest, that might be available as a pool. I'm not suggesting that that would be enough money to pay for all of those folks in our community that couldn't afford a regular membership fee. But what you could do is to take those centers and look at all of the centers and those proportional memberships that are $5 or less, obviously could go to all of them, that money could go to all the centers. But of course, the centers in the communities that are serving, in the lower communities and the most vulnerable people, will probably, of course, get the most money, but that's what's going to keep them open. And I am very concerned that we don't have a lot of operators out there who might be willing to go in these low-income communities otherwise.
Thank you. Well said, Mike. Thank you. Michael Washington, and Michael will be followed by Nita Borland.
Outstanding, sir. Let me say, y'all can give your hands up, because I'm not going against that. I like that. Sir, horseshoe members, I'm not going to take this long because of other stuff to speak. I am all for wellness centers in helping the elderly and anyone else who may need it, because they've proven their worth to society. They've paved the way for me to be standing here today, a lot have. I don't know a lot, but for the most part, humanity is very important. And I believe that these wellness centers, as this gentleman spoke about, to piggyback a little further, it should be in areas where they're accessible to people who may need to have access to them. And so with that, because I'm not there yet, but I hope and pray, should that time arrive, that I do have an opportunity to have someone to care about me and not to write me off as somebody who was a has-been. Thank y'all very much, sir.
Thank you. Nita Borland.
I'm representing, I'm representing the Pete White Wellness Center as one of the members to tell you what an influence that it has had in my life and how it's changed me. On March the sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, I lost my husband to cancer. It was during that time that I became depressed because I was alone, we never had children, and I didn't have anything to do. And so I started eating, I started gaining weight, I was eating unhealthy foods, and before I knew it, I'd gained thirty pounds. I've heard that widows have to establish a new life and they have to have a new purpose. About that time is when I found the Pete White Wellness Center. It kept me active. It was a new center and very affordable. And it's more than just a gym to us. I started exercising, I took nutrition classes, I began seeing a new purpose and a fulfillment in my life. I attend six days a week. Within that year, I took off what I call my grief weight, which was the thirty pounds that I had gained. I made new friends. I got a new life. I feel better both mentally and physically. I found that it was very affordable to everyone. It's not just a gym, but it's a wellness center. It's kept me, it's a place where all my friends and my neighbors could go to, where they had access to and they could afford it. It has gotten me into a lot of classes, things that I never knew before. It teaches, I take classes on balancing, how to prevent myself from falling, how to strengthen my body. There are classes that help with understanding Medicare laws. There are classes about end-of-life decisions, about making wills, estate planning, how to handle diseases like Alzheimer's and diabetes. We learn about medication safety, how to store your medication properly, how to dispose of it. We learn about scams. I'm learning Spanish. There was a lady in the gym, in the pool one day, and I seen her crying. She couldn't talk English, I couldn't speak Spanish. I just gave her a hug. And now we're both learning each other's language. I'm learning jewelry making, painting, greeting card making, and much more. But most important, I'm making friends, meeting new women and other widows. We encourage each other, we laugh together, we spend time together, and we cry together, and we go to lunch together. I get up in the morning, I'm out of the house by eight o'clock in the morning, and sometimes I don't come till three o'clock or four o'clock in the afternoon, but I have a fulfilled life. This year, on May seventeenth, would have been our forty-first wedding anniversary. He's no longer celebrating, but I still am. So I went to the gym, I did my classes, and after my classes, I went out to eat with some of my gym friends. Then after we got through eating, I could have my choice. I could have either went home and just sat by myself, but instead, I went back to the wellness center, and I got in the pool, and I made new friends. I'm very happy, and I found my purpose. And I want to thank you guys for the MAPS program and for North Care for providing this for us.
Thank you so much. And right at two minutes and fifty-nine seconds. Well done. Okay, that concludes Senior Wellness Centers. We will now transition to our last item on the agenda, item three D, animal shelter. So I think we're, I hear some hustle-bustle outside, so we may want to open those doors and invite them in. We'll pause for a moment. Thank you. Wait, wait, he can't leave.
Yeah, he can't leave. Can I come back?
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, we're at item three E, animal shelter, and I believe we have, John Gary is going to present, and the floor is yours. I don't know how it's structured, to be honest with you, so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, first, thanks for allowing us the time to do this today. I know it's a long day for you guys, so. The first slide, obviously, I will get this to work. This is just one of our adoption dogs that go through one of our kennels. I think this is a good picture of what our staff and we see every day. This slide really just talks about the purpose and the reason why we are looking at this as part of the MAPS projects. You know, the current facility we have really was designed in, it was designed in the early to mid-nineties, and it wasn't designed for life-saving. It was really designed to bring animals in, hold them for three days, and then euthanize them. At that time, only about ten to fifteen percent of the animals that came into our facility went out alive. And so the building was built based on that, that fact at that time. And so the things that we're hoping to accomplish, if we were to be part of MAPS Four, is to really improve the experience for the customers and our animals. I think, you know, a part of the big life-saving work that we do involves getting people to come in the first place. And they don't want to come to a building that is hard for them to maneuver around, that's uncomfortable, that's loud, that smells. And all of those things are things that we have to deal with in our current facility. And then in, address the operational inefficiencies. Our building, we're constantly dealing with, just the whole way that the building is designed and set up, the air conditioners are constantly going out, and the way the hallways are, they're just, it's very hard, difficult building to maintain. It was very much built, for lack of a better term, like a prison. And it's, it needs to, that's what we're really trying to improve upon. This is a current aerial view of our facility. This was just taken a few weeks ago, and as you can see, it very much is prison-like. When you look in our kennels, there's no windows, there's no windows in the hallways. The only windows in the entire building are what you see out in the front of the building towards our front lobby area and then in our administration building. Other than that, there are, there are no windows in our building. In twenty eighteen, this is our, the calendar year twenty eighteen, we took in just under 22,000 animals through our facility. During our busiest times of the year, like the summer months, it's, our average intake each day is ninety to 120 animals. This is just last month, June stats, 2,500 total animals came into our building. We were able to adopt out 585, 476 had to be euthanized, and we transferred 1,231. And then the return to owner rates are abysmally low, they're only at 203 were returned to their owner. Our transfer partners and the relationships that we built with our partners, we have a former partner in the Central Oklahoma Humane Society, but we have over a hundred different people. a former partner in the Central Oklahoma Humane Society, but we have over 100 different groups that we work with, and that transfer number, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without them. I want to talk a little bit about the history. We just had 70 years that animal, the animal shelter existed here in Oklahoma City. It originally started being ran by what was at that time the Oklahoma City Humane Society, and then in the early '70s, it was turned over to the city to run, actually through the zoo. In 95, the current facility that we have was, was being, was being designed and construction began in 95. The first phase finished in about 98. In the first photo that you see over there on the far left is actually the remnants of the original building that was there from the '70s. It still sits on our property today. It's no longer usable for animals, but we do use it for storage. And then the next, the next phase of that construction, the current phase facility was completed in about 2001, and that's whenever we were able to actually move completely out of the old 1970s building into our current facility that we have today. 2008, we did receive a lot of renovations done to the building. We were able to add a cat area prior to that. In the original design of the building, cats were actually kept in the same room as dogs, believe it or not. And so thankfully, we did have a project where we were able to, to do that and add the cat facility. We renovated and then added admin, and then we got a new barn area at that same time. This is going on its own. And so we want to talk about some of the inefficiencies that we have. The current building, as I said, it wasn't designed for life-saving, so only 37 dog kennels were in place for adoption dogs at that time, and that's currently what we have today. We average between 100 and 120 dogs available for adoption, and we have to have that many to maintain the high live release rate that we have. Our public areas, there's a huge safety concern. When you come into our building, there's only about 10 feet from the door to our front counter. On any given Saturday, there could be 50 to 100 people in that tight space. It's a rarely safe, a big safety concern because a lot of dogs are coming in, a lot of dogs going out. A normal facility our size and a city our size, the building would have two separate entries, one for animals leaving through adoption and not process, and then another one for animals coming in. Ours is all done through a very small, very tight, cramped space. I'm happy to say that we have over 90,000 visitors in our shelter every year. We are a very, very busy shelter. On a Saturday, you can come, it's like people come like they go to the mall. They like coming, walking around, looking at the animals, and so just as far as that goes, people enjoy coming to the facility. And so I think making it a better space could help in that aspect, too, for those visitors that we have. We don't have a designated area for intake exams. As animals come in, it's so important, one of the first things that need to happen is our vet staff needs to be able to view them and look at them and ensure that they're healthy and so that we can do what we can to make sure they get veterinary care if that's needed right when they come into our building. And right now, we have a makeshift exam room. We actually turned a janitorial closet into an intake exam room for our vet staff to use. And so we really need an area for that as part of the building's main focus. Like I said, dogs and cats are in the same room. When you're in that front lobby, you have people holding cats and people holding dogs, and there's a big, big safety concern. If you come out in any given afternoon, you will see exactly what we're talking about, especially with the number of dogs that are coming into our facility. And then once again, it's a very stressful environment, not just for the, for the animals, but for the people, for the staff. When you have that many people crowded in that small space, it's very stressful towards the staff control and maintain a good flow of traffic through there. Our current building was, like I said, was designed in the mid-'90s, and interestingly enough, there was no designated space for our animal control program, so our field officers had no space, no office, no anything. So we had a classroom that was, was built into that building, and we actually had to turn it into and suck cubicles in there and gave our field officers a space to work. The problem with that is while it's worked for now our field officers, we now don't have that valuable classroom that we need for our 60 staff members to be able to go and learn and be trained properly. So it took away from dedicated space that we needed for other purposes, and our field officers really need a place to go. They need a quiet place to be able to interview complaining parties and then people, victims of the, of the attacks that sometimes that we have to deal with. And so it's just really important that we try to get a space for them to do their jobs properly. Our veterinary services, we do actually have a very nice, large surgery suite area. Fortunately, when the building was designed at that time, we were contracting with OSU Veterinary College, and so they did keep that in mind when they, in the designing of the building, and we do have a fairly large actual surgical suite. But if you also go into our clinic area, everything else is kind of broken up into very small rooms. The exam rooms are very small. It's hard to get animals in and out and through there. They just don't have a really good space to do the type of work that they need to be able to do in the exam areas. We need proper diagnostic areas. Right now, there really isn't a designated space for that. It's done in a, in a kind of a gathering spot for the staff, and then it's next to a sink, they're looking at fecal matter through a microscope. So it's, it's very, I mean, they're doing the best they can with the area they have, but it's an area that really needs a lot of work. And then, and we also don't have a designated space for X-ray machine, and we really should have an X-ray machine. And the amount of animals that we see that come through our building, we see a lot of animals hit by cars, and right now, we have to contract all of that out at a very high expense to us. Animal holding, I will say, we were fortunate, in 2015, we were funded and were able to replace the kennels that we had in our building that were, that really, really desperately need to be replaced, and we were able to add some epoxy flooring in. The problem with that was we were only able to replace the current kenneling, so we weren't able to increase the size of the kennels that needed to be increased. We weren't able to make additional space, good isolation space. We could just replace what we currently had, which wasn't, wasn't sufficient to house the number of animals that we see. So although our kennels are pretty, they are, they're too small, and there's not enough of them. And so that's an area that we really, you know, the key to getting animals out of a shelter alive is keeping them healthy both physically and mentally. And when you have crowded kennels and not enough space for the number of animals that are coming in, it makes that very difficult to do. One of the other things that is desperately needed in a new shelter would be the proper outside play areas so that animals can actually physically get out of the building, get outside, get out of the weather. Once again, mentally, it keeps them healthier while they're there in our building. And then it just, it makes it easier on the staff for cleaning. You know, we can clear out, get animals outside while they're doing cleaning inside. It just makes it a better layout and better for our entire staff. And then currently, our layout is not public-friendly. If you ever come to our shelter, I promise you, if the first time you're there, you're going to get lost when you're walking through. And it's just, the layout is, is very boxy, very confusing, and so it's not real public-friendly. And when you have a public building that is really just open for anyone to walk in and walk through, really, you should have a good, nice flow and layout, and then not just for the public, but for the animals. It's, you know, when you have animals that need to go from the stray areas to a clinic area into the adoption area, the building needs to be laid out to facilitate that and where we can do it with as little cross-contamination as possible. And then lastly, when the current building was built, it, there was no, well, one, we didn't have the information that we have today on shelter design, but there was no consultation from people that ran shelters. It was literally designed by an architect and then built. And so they used things like, we have steel doors that are rotting out all over the building, floors that were bare concrete where disease could be housed in the sheet rock walls and animal holding areas, that that's the worst mistake you can make in sheltering, and we deal with that on a daily basis in our shelter. Then I want to talk about the demonstrated success that we've had. This is, in 2007, we, was when we really, when we really decided we're going to make a difference for the animals in Oklahoma City, and thankfully, the Central Oklahoma Humane Society was formed about that time, and then we formed a formal partnership with them. At that time, we actually set a live release rate of only 75%. And I say only 75%. It's, it's interesting for me to say that today because at the time, we thought that was unachievable. About 25% of the animals that came into our facility were dying, or only about 25% were getting out alive. The rest of them were dying in our facility. And so when we set that goal of 75%, I can tell you, as I've just spent the last two decades in that shelter, I never thought that was possible. Well, we originally set the goal for 2012. We set ourselves five years, and it took us 11 years to get there. And very proud to say that in 2018, we reached that, that goal of a live release rate of 75%, 79% technically. 2018 calendar year, we actually just finished with an 86% live release rate. And really, all the live release rate is, when we say percent of live releases, it's really live noses in, live noses out, the percentage of dogs that came in our building that walked out alive. And we focus on that number a lot, I think sometimes too much, because there are animals that are euthanized because they need to be, you know, either through, because of temperament or through health. But we have now set the goal to save 90% of the animals that come into our facility, and across the country, that's kind of become the standard for, for a good, solid municipal program. They should be saving at least 90% of the animals that come in. I'm proud of the fact that we're at 86%, but I really think that a new facility is going to be what we need to get us to 90, and then not just get there, because getting there is one thing, but to sustain it is a whole nother level of commitment. And I think that a new facility will be, allow us to be able to do that. We're estimating the cost, working with the MAPS folks, we were able to estimate the cost for a new facility to be between 40 and 45 million. That, that number is really dependent upon how quickly the building goes under construction. It could be less than that if we can get to the building sooner, but that's just the estimate that we have at this point in time. The proposed new shelter would really incorporate all modern knowledge of sheltering best practices. I will say, we've, we've been very fortunate in our industry in the last 10 years to have gained so much more through research and through all kinds of things. The national groups have done so many things to help our industry over the last 10 years. And so we're much smarter today than we were 10 years ago, and we're able to now know what, what a new shelter would need, what it takes to build a shelter that is designed for life-saving. We expect that shelter to be about 67,000 square feet. That's, that's including offices areas and everything, and then also, that is also included in our barn improvements. We originally thought that we would need to add a new barn, but we, our barn that was finished in 2008 is actually relatively nice and just will need a few things like drainage and things like that to help it get to where it needs to be. So that's including that. And then a welcoming structures for humans and animals. We talk about this a lot, but it, you know, one of the things I have to constantly preach to our staff, we can't help the animals if we don't help the people. And so having a facility that's designed for the people that come and visit us and come to adopt is so important. And frankly, when our building was designed and built, that was, that really wasn't even taken into consideration. So in a new facility, that would be really, as important it is for the animals, it's going to be even more important that we make it a good place for the people there as well. And then a current, you know, the more modern facilities, they have the park-like setting, you know, a lot of windows, lots of grass, lots of trees, just a place where, where people and animals alike can go and not have the stress of, of the facility that we currently have. Like I said, it's very, very much like walking into a prison and walking around and like what you'd see when you're back there. And it's, as for staff members, that's, that's very difficult environment to even work in. And so we hope to, with a new facility, we can address some of that as well. At this time, I want to turn the presentation over to Louisa McCune.
My name is Louisa McCune, and I live in the Greens at 4200 Tamarisk Drive in Ward 8, Mr. Stone Cypher's Ward. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today, to the mayor, to the council, to Councilor Nice of Ward 7, where the animal shelter is located. I know everyone is weary, and I have the unenviable position of being today the last presenter during the whole week. I appreciate your patience. I promise you, this topic is something that Oklahoma City citizens look forward to discussing. I want to acknowledge your watchers on YouTube, your watchers on the YouTube stream, everyone here in the gallery who waited for us today, and most importantly, all of the residents of Oklahoma City, two-legged, four-legged, and winged. It is a, it is a privilege to co-present with John Gary. He does an extraordinary job of unifying all of the people and organizations who work directly with Oklahoma City Animal Welfare. As he said, he oversees 60 employees and the relationships that come with more than 100 independent nonprofit organizations that are registered with the city to pull animals for adoption and rescue, and I can tell you, this is no easy task. John has, in his 20 years at Animal Welfare, has served in every single capacity there except as veterinarian, and he knows of what he speaks. I defer to him in all of these matters. So let's move to the first exterior rendering. So we're unveiling this here for the first time. Today, John and I are proposing a completely new Oklahoma City Animal Welfare Resource Center. As he said, this would involve demolishing and replacing the existing building. Here we have the exterior rendering, and these designs are by Todd Edmonds, who's here with us today, Wave Todd. He's an architect and partner with HSE Architects of Oklahoma City. We're going to stay on this slide for a little bit. In this portion of our presentation, I'd like to be crystal clear in setting the social context surrounding our proposal. Fundamentally, we believe that animal well-being is a critical variable in community health, and animal shelter is an essential piece of the social and municipal fabric of a place much like a fire department. It offers a vital and measurable dimension of the human community, and a well-designed and well-funded shelter is part of the portfolio of benefits found in vibrant city life. Truly, human health metrics are connected in quite direct ways to how we treat animals. Humane cities are characterized by the presence of leadership, institutions, and policies working collaboratively across systems. This infrastructure in humane cities adapts to and expands upon the community's ability to address issues of basic need, nutrition, housing, medical care, financial security, while also supporting the advancement of higher-order needs, compassion, connection, self-determination, cultural competence, and social capital. My mantra that I say almost daily, if not hourly, is where animals fare well, people fare well, and where they do not, neither do the people. We know this through anecdote and personal stories, of course, but we also know this through social science. Child abuse, elder abuse, animal abuse, and domestic violence, they are intrinsically linked. It is the job of Oklahoma City Animal Welfare to not only care for the abandoned and neglected, but to investigate the crimes perpetrated against these innocent creatures. For good or for ill, the animals in a community are the canary in the coal mine. How they are doing is an indicator of community well-being. And this is part of the conversation that I think warrants ensuring that council members know there is robust research to support these underlying concepts. Considering human and animal health and welfare together deepens our understanding of the factors involved and creates a solutions-oriented approach to overall health and welfare issues. So this, so in this MAPS proposal, we are operating from the premise that you cannot extricate animals from the conversation about real quality of life. In fact, we would go so far as to say that animal well-being in a city or town is among the most paramount indicators of a good place to live. And guess what? That is also reflected in the research. In the fall of 2017, Polster Lake Research conducted a survey among Oklahomans, asking them what they believed determines a good place to live. The question was, what is, the question was, what is a reflection of a good place to live? And the results on this one question were among the most impressive of the whole survey. Respondents said, in this order, that a reflection of a good place to live was, number one, good schools; number two, the respect we have for our neighbors; number three, a strong economy; and number four, strong laws to protect animals from cruelty. Number four, let me say that again, number four, strong laws to protect animals from cruelty. So with all due respect, this was above parks and recreation, it was above restaurants and retail, it was above museums and the arts, and it was above sports teams and other entertainment. And I am happy to share this data with you after today's meeting. Why are people's relationships with their own animals so important? It's also worthwhile to orient everyone here today to the broader concepts underlying the human-animal bond and companion, companion animals' role in social support and confronting isolation and loneliness, which is one of the most pressing issues facing our society today. In fact, I'm going to digress for a moment. When Pope Francis was, made the pope, he said that one of the most pressing issues facing the world today is the loneliness of elders, which we heard about earlier today. The role of the animal shelter is not merely about housing lost or homeless pets, it's about facilitating connections between people and animals. So yes, it's wonderful to go to the basketball game or a concert at a nice arena or a wonderful neighborhood rich with restaurants and retail. All of these things are important to a vibrant city, green spaces and outdoor life, but when it comes to day-to-day living, in all neighborhoods, in all wards, in nearly all houses, on all streets, the measure of quality of life most often has to do with the cat on your pillow or the dog at the foot of your bed. The average pet in the United States gets nine gifts a year on Valentine's Day. It's the biggest gift-giving day. On a more serious- On a more serious note, though, most children will grow up with a companion, more children will grow up with a companion animal in the home than a father. The first reciprocal playmate in many homes is a dog or a cat, making the treatment of animals central to the psychological health of children's development. To the canary in the coal mine analogy, children growing up in a home and community where animals are well-cared-for are more resilient, socially and emotionally higher functioning, they do better in school, and they make and keep friends better. Conversely, children routinely exposed to cruelty are at a greater risk of callousness and other behavioral risk factors. We know these things organically, and the social science supports it. Animal Welfare of Oklahoma City, John's organization, doesn't refuse any single type of animal brought to its doors: horses, exotics, reptiles, guinea pigs, large birds, farm animals, wildlife. If you can think of it, they will accept it. They had a lion there 20 years ago. And they do it on a relative unfortunate shoestring. Comparable cities spend three times and two times what we do, and yet they all individually take in fewer animals than the Oklahoma City Animal Shelter. Austin, Texas, three times the budget, fewer animals. Fort Worth, Texas, twice the budget, fewer animals. And Albuquerque, New Mexico, twice the budget, fewer animals. So, I don't mean to come across as chastising, but I do believe it's time for us to really get serious about being a great city, and we believe, and we're making the case that it's time for MAPS to address animals. If we neglect the animals, we're no better than our peers, and in fact, we're demonstrably worse, as in the cases I just mentioned. It's a variant of a phrase we're probably all familiar with: all hat, no cattle. We look good as a city and fun to be around, but the substantive core values just aren't there if we neglect the animals. And I think that's a message we run the risk of relaying if we continue to ignore the dire needs of the Oklahoma City Animal Shelter, as John put forth earlier. The least of these, it's a biblical tenet, it's our duty to protect and nurture the least of these. I know that the chamber and the council rightly prioritize business and talent development. And in that vein, I cannot overstate to you the importance of a humane community in enhancing the brand equity of a city. A study by Professor Philip Tedeschi and the research team at the Institute for Human-Animal Connection at University of Denver studied the economic impact of Austin's no-kill resolution between the years 2010 and 2016, and conservatively measured a total economic impact of $157,452,503. His work underscores the impact of progressive animal welfare on public health, social capital, and community engagement. An animal shelter is a unique space in a community in that it comes into contact with a wide variety of human strengths and challenges. An animal shelter that uses best practices in conjunction with culturally competent outreach can support the development of humane attitudes that result in overall social improvement. Now, as we progress to the interior slide, I want to restate what a privilege it is to advocate for the most vulnerable in our city. I would be remiss if I didn't mention just a few, since they can't be here today to represent themselves. They are Lady, Rocky, Jemima, Lulu, Lucy, Piper, Ruby, Ike, Beauty, Freddie, Sadie, Cruz, Sassy, and Miles, those are the dogs I'm mentioning, and Cat, Spunky, Ozzy, Oreo, and Sabrina. They're all there today. Here we have the inside look from Todd Edmonds' group. Animal shelters are uncommonly expensive buildings, often costing 500 to 600 per square foot. Today's proposal, construction price is down to 400 per square foot at a maximum of 67,000 square feet, all in, adjusted for inflation. Built by the year 2025 is roughly 43 million, which includes all soft costs. We believe this is money well-spent. If you think about the most expensive rooms in a house, they are the kitchens and bathrooms, and animal shelters are one big matrix of many bathrooms and kitchens. We are neutral on the best location, but believe there are relevant reasons to stay on Southeast 29th, namely that you already own it, and also, most field service calls come from the southeast and northeast sides of Oklahoma City. Also, a state-of-the-art shelter, warm and welcoming and humane in its design, would be a catalyst for development on that stretch of Southeast 29th Street, an area that, to my knowledge, has not seen any benefit of prior MAPS projects. No matter what part of the city it is located in, a transformative animal shelter on the order of what we are proposing is a total game-changer for the people and the animals. Our shelter is insufficient for a city of our size. It was designed when our population was 30% fewer, and at a time when no understanding was in place about animal sheltering. The paradigm that informs our proposal is a belief that animal welfare should be considered a moral imperative, but also acknowledges that humans benefit from acting on this imperative. By committing MAPS resources to solving these issues in an equitable manner, by visualizing and funding an Oklahoma City Animal Welfare Resource Center through MAPS, we will galvanize a diverse set of stakeholders with mutual benefit at the intersection of human and animal well-being and thriving, all of which are instrumental in great cities. If the mothership of animal welfare in our state are the two capital city assets, the zoo and the animal shelter, then these two sites are really diametrically on opposite ends of the spectrum. The zoo is here, the animal shelter is here. And it reminds me of the famous quote from Dr. George Cross, former, once president of University of Oklahoma, after OU won the national championship in the early 1950s. He said, "Let's build a university our football team can be proud of." I'm saying, "Let's build an animal shelter that our zoo can be proud of." To conclude, I invite all of us to go to the animal shelter in between now and Labor Day, and perhaps even to sit through a day of euthanases, 476 of which occurred in June. If we do this together, I think you will see the importance of prioritizing the animal shelter in our city, in our time, and in MAPS 4. Thank you.
Thank you. One informational statement, I don't think anyone thinks they're in planning commission right now, but that was slated to start at 1:30, and it will be delayed until the conclusion of this meeting for anybody who can hear the sound of my voice. So, you've seen the pressures, obviously, that we'll get from today's presentations, Tuesdays, and the two that lie ahead. I'm curious if, you know, as we're trying to put this jigsaw puzzle together, and we think, we do want to do something for the animal shelter, but we feel like it's 20 or 30, you know, is it 40 or bust? Or is there something meaningful we can do and maybe work with the existing facility or something? I mean, I'm sure we're all going to be wondering that in the future, and now's the time to have that conversation while you're all here.
Well, I mean, one thing I would say is that if renovation was an option that we went through, it would be very, very extensive. One of the things that we have to remember is, due to the volume of animals we take in, we have to stay operational. And so, that would make it very, very difficult. We did do an estimate of a renovation, and it was about 20 to 25 million. But once again, with the current facility design, I don't think we could accomplish what we really set out to accomplish if we built a new facility.
And I just would add that in the history of MAPS projects being transformational, what we're proposing here is transformational, not just a municipal service that already exists.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, thank you for presenting. Just on a personal note, I adopted a dog from a rescue that is one of your partners. So, I appreciate the work you all have done to work in diverting animals away from the shelter through all those partners. Because, yeah, I don't, yeah, I can't look at those pictures, and I haven't been to visit this shelter yet, just because I don't know if I can emotionally handle it.
We'll follow up to schedule a meeting at the shelter.
You've already convinced me, so I don't know if I can emotionally take it. But I was just curious with the thought of the new, well, first, I guess, you mentioned, right now, we contract out for surgical services. Do you have like an estimate of what that number is, about how much we spend on that?
I don't. It varies. A lot of that is paid for through donation funds that we get. It varies quite a bit, and it really depends on the time of year and the need.
Okay. And then, my other question was, would we expect that the operating, if we built a new facility, would we expect the operating cost would go up or down? Or would they just stay flat? Do we have a sense of that?
Well, we expect with the efficiencies of the new building, operationally, we probably, we expect to be able to do better with the current budget that we have, just by having materials and things in the building that are not constantly needing to be maintained. So, we really believe that as far as that goes, we'd be okay as far as our operational budget.
I was just curious. Thank you.
So, my cat, Marion, some friends found her roaming the streets of Stillwater when I was in grad school. She's named Marion after Marion Crane from Psycho, because my cat is black and white, the movie's black and white. Cats don't like water. If you've seen the movie, you know what happens to poor Marion. But I promised her, all those days that I knocked doors from July 5th until February 11th, all those hours I was not home, that I was doing it for those better environments for my students, but for a better environment for her. And so, there are major things that I believe a new facility would address that I think are so important. And it's because I took a tour of our existing facility the same week, unfortunately, that councilperson Hammond and I toured the Oklahoma County Jail. That week is seared in my memory. It is maybe one of the hardest weeks I've ever had in my life, because I also toured a new veterans homeless home. And because I saw the similarities between, unfortunately, and I hate to say it, but you said it first, that jail and the way in which the current facilities limit what we can do for the least amongst us, I would push passionately that this is, along with some of the projects we've heard so far, a priority, and for three major reasons. One, with less space comes more euthanasia. We've got to be very clear about this. Two, those cages we saw, in which the dogs currently reside, to your point, the longer they're in there, the less adoptable they become. And the medium and large-sized dogs, I've learned, tend to be the least adoptable in a lot of people's mind, because they have, people have young families and they're terrified, oh, this dog might be too big, and they don't see the protection that that dog offers. But a lot of those are the dogs who are sitting in those cages longer, and the longer they're in there, what does that do to their brains? And we know. And so, I would encourage us to have that, more space. I would encourage us to continue what you all are doing with the catch-and-release, where we spay and neuter. So, we need more funding for workers to be able to do that work. My neighbors in the Passo, we do that work. And then, thirdly, as the city council already approved, as we know, I think it was the watershed grant, did I get that right? That allows us, we need more workers, and we've also got to educate our people about the volunteer opportunities to go to our shelter and walk those dogs. They cannot spend all of their time in those cages weekly. I believe they get out two to three times a week, am I wrong?
That's not that often.
I didn't think so. That's not cool, man. I don't know what to say. How would we, to that woman who talked about the Senior Wellness Center, when she was at home the way that she was for the length of time that she was, what does that do to your emotional well-being? And that's on my brain. So, anyway, so thank you for your presentation.
I'd also like to say thank you, and I think, just knowing and understanding the history of why it is strategically placed where it is, that was something that I did not know. And I think a lot of us are like, why is it on the southeast side? But to actually have that history in place to tell the story of why it is important for it to remain in that area, it speaks volumes. And, you know, I think, as he's talking about Marion, I think about my 13-year-old Foxy Brown. Yeah. Yeah. She's a rescue baby as well. And even when I toured, there were bunny rabbits that were there. So, I mean, you know, it just, as we said and we heard, it runs the gamut of what the animal shelter will accept, and people are there to make sure that those animals are maintained. And then, I also think about the Strong Neighborhood Initiative, when we have those officers that come out and they give those free vaccinations for communities. So, these are all things that are incorporated with our animal shelters. So, those are things I think we need to also look at as we're incorporating these ideas with this shelter. And thank you all for the work you do, because I don't think you get thanked enough, because that is not an easy task, when people call and say, come get a dog, or a cat, or whatever, or a horse, for that matter, whatever it is. But this is something that I think we should all consider, and I think, in my opinion, animals do change lives. I think about my father and my stepfather passing away. If it wasn't for my dog, if it wasn't for Foxy Brown, I wouldn't be in the mental state I think I have now, because those are things that help. It's therapy. It's therapy when you have animals. It's therapy just to your soul as well. So, and while they're just as therapeutic, I think we're therapy to them, and they deserve us, just like we deserve them.
Yeah. I'll add my gratitude to you, John, and everybody in this room. I know that you're all cogs in the volunteer network that makes animal welfare work in Oklahoma City. Logan Holt, the first dog of Oklahoma City, was, he would not think that's funny, was hours away from being euthanized at the shelter when a volunteer from Bella rushed down there to rescue him, and then we later met Logan at a PetSmart, at a Bella Saturday adoption event. So, you know, without that volunteer network, and obviously with better facilities, maybe he wouldn't have been in that position. But, so thank you for that. So, we have quite a few people who've signed up to speak. You know, it's 1:54, I just mentioned that. But we will certainly honor the contract we have here for your ability to speak, but if, I will however, be pretty strict on keeping it to three minutes, and I'll stop you if we hit that point. And if you think that what you can say can be said in 30 seconds or a minute, there's nothing wrong with that. There is point of diminishing returns sometimes. But I know some of you have some really important things to say, and we certainly want to hear it. And so, we'll start with Trey McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I feel like we've kind of been in a crisis situation with the animal shelter where we are. They've done an amazing job with the resources that they've had up to this point. But like Louisa was saying, the city has grown so much, and with 30% growth and the amount of euthanasia we have in our animal shelter, we shouldn't be there at this point. I think that the key point of this is the foundation. I mean, all the MAPS program has helped the city build foundations all over the place. And I think with a solid foundation with an animal shelter, I just really feel like that it really helps the city move forward. And just like Louisa said, a checkmark on number four, even if you look at businesses coming to town, they're going to go down a list and check these things off. I mean, imagine what it looks like when we have a beautiful, beautiful animal shelter, where pets can be adopted, where pets are even happy, I mean, versus being in a cage, versus being in, look like, almost like a hotel room, but that's okay. But it creates a better atmosphere all the way around. 90,000 visitors, that's amazing. It's amazing that what our community does already, volunteerism, everything that happens. And if you've never been on the Nextdoor app, all the communities work together. There's a dog running around in the park, there's all these things. The community is always behind supporting animals, which I love, love in this community. I just think that, and I'll try to keep this really short, this is an opportunity for us to lead and build a really solid foundation, and also think it's a reflection of our humanity and how we treat animals. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dana McCrory of the Oklahoma Humane Society, and Dana will be followed by Carly Wright. I'll start giving those warnings so you can get close and in position. Welcome, Dana.
Well, good afternoon. I was thinking I would say good morning, but good afternoon. I just wanted to stand before you and tell you that the Oklahoma Humane Society... I just wanted to stand before you and tell you that the Oklahoma Humane Society and Oklahoma City Animal Welfare has a symbiotic relationship. And on behalf of our Board of Directors, our volunteers and our staff, we want to offer our complete and utter support for this Oklahoma City Animal Welfare. It will make our job easier. It will make our city better. And a new shelter will help us change the landscape of animal welfare in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Carly Wright. And then, after that will be Dana Huckabee.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Carly Wright. I'm a volunteer for Pet Angels Rescue. We directly pull from Oklahoma City Animal Welfare. My dog in particular was pulled from there four years ago. He was actually placed on their night drop overnight having seizures. And, you know, when your dogs are having seizures, especially if they're puppies, it could be a multitude of things, but it could be parvo, it could be dyspnea, and they don't have the resources to treat that immediately. So, those dogs are the ones that kind of get put first on the list to be euthanized. So, they networked him out. Dana Huckabee from Pet Angels Rescue was the one to pull him. And they gave him that chance. You know, the networking is there. They are getting, they are trying their best to get these animals out. They are not, you know, limited in that way at all. And 467 animals in the month of June is hard to swallow. And if you've never had to sit or walk in the euthanasia room and see those animals, they're piled in cages. There's puppies. You know, these aren't just sick animals. Most of them are healthy, adoptable animals. So, this, and it is really a matter of space. So, if we can change that and make more space for these animals, then that would be a direct impact on euthanasia rates. Thank you so much for your time.
Dana Huckabee. And after that will be Dana Swanson.
I would just like to say some of the benefits of having a new shelter facility. I've been blessed enough to have an adoption center out in Logan County now. And whenever I built that, I built it in design of looking at other cities outside of our area because we don't have the proper facilities in our area. And you want it to be warm and inviting. The way our current facility is, we're attracting the drop-offs. We're attracting the, you know, people bringing in the strays and the unwanted dogs. People who want to adopt aren't necessarily going to want to go to the Oklahoma City Shelter because it's a sad place to go. We have our facility. It's bright colors. It's fun. It's inviting. It's almost kind of like a daycare Chuck E. Cheese environment. You know, the cats have their own TV to watch and that kind of thing with their little fish swimming around. So, people are entertained with that. So, by having a better facility and a better lit facility and one that's more warm and inviting, you're going to see those increased adoption rates that they're looking for. It's going to be a community activity that things, you know, like we did a Fourth of July thing one time and people were like, I want to make this our new family tradition is to go to a dog shelter on the Fourth of July. So, but with what Oklahoma City is working with right now, they would never be able to achieve that. So, it would be great for them to have the new facilities to be able to attract the adoptions and the volunteers that they so desperately need because you don't want to go to a depressing place to volunteer your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Swanson. And after that will be Janet Hickson.
Hi, my name is Dana Swanson. I'm a volunteer with Safe Haven and I have previously volunteered with Humane Society and with Bella Foundation. Currently, I am a foster parent to an undisclosed number of kittens. Something you never ask a foster during kitten season. How many cats do you have? And while I was sitting here listening, I got no less than three texts asking me if I could pull some kittens from the Oklahoma City Shelter who were on the list. And we all know what the list is if we're in rescue. It's hard to say no because we know that when we do, those kittens could die. The puppies that we say no, they could die that day. I have pulled kittens and cats that have been on their way to the euthanasia room. I have pulled some that have been in the euthanasia room. My goal as a foster is to give them a second chance. When do you say no? The shelter's been full. They euthanized over 400 animals last month, animals that we could have fostered. So, we end up feeling guilty when we do say no. Compassion fatigue is a huge problem in our field. It's a huge problem for shelter vets. It's a huge problem for shelter staff. Anyone involved in rescue can suffer from compassion fatigue. Veterinarians, particularly those that work with shelter animals, have the highest suicide rates on record. I mean, they're dying because they care so much about these animals that they cannot save because there's just too many of them. A new shelter with more space will allow these animals to have more time. Time for us to get more fosters, time for us to get more adoptions, time for them to get their new people before we have to walk them down that hallway to the room. My goal as a foster is to get them in and get them healthy and get them out. But without a new shelter, we're going to continue to be getting text messages upon text messages. Can you save this kitten? Can you save this cat? Can you save this puppy? We need to have a shelter that can give the puppies and kittens and rabbits and horses more time than we can currently give them. And, you know, when I look at those kittens' faces when I bring them home from the shelter, I know it's worth it because they've got another chance. And it breaks my heart when I have to say no and know that those kittens may not have another chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Hickson. And after that will be Carol Heinen.
Hi, my name's Janet Hickson. I'm a longtime volunteer at the shelter. I've been there about 15 years or more. I'm not exactly sure when I started volunteering. But the shelter is defined, a shelter is defined as a place of temporary protection, to shield from something harmful, a refuge. I think it would be hard to say that the Oklahoma City Shelter meets that definition right now in all circumstances. I've been a volunteer there for many years with many organizations. And I can't think of any city service that has worked as long with as little funding, staff, fanfare, and in subpar conditions as it is asked to on a continuous basis and meet, actually meet all the services that it's supposed to provide its citizens. In fact, if the volunteers and the partners stopped contributing today, it is my guess that you would have to shut the doors of that place because it could not operate. An animal shelter is as much for the community and its citizens as it is for its animals. It is often the starting point and sometimes the ending point for the victims of pet, the pet victims of domestic violence, cruelty, abandonment, and other crimes and legal issues. And let's not even forget that pets enrich our lives, which at least three of you here have said you have today, are pets. Whether it's a bird, a horse, a rabbit, or the more common cats and dogs, we all know that they enrich our lives and they are important to our family and our community. Let's remove all the barriers to better serve our pet and human community. It's time we give our citizens the opportunity to vote on an animal shelter that is a first-class facility, that we as citizens can be proud of, that our staff can be proud of, and that will meet the needs of our community now and in the future. A shelter that is truly a shelter for all the animals that enters those doors every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Heinen, followed by Michael Washington.
I'll be very quick. I'm in Ward 2. Thank you, James, for your support. I just wanted to say one thing real quickly. We adopted, we have three beagles, two of whom we got at the shelter. After the last one was adopted, I came home and I couldn't sleep for a week. So, I would really encourage each one of you to go see for yourselves. If you haven't been there, go see it for yourselves and make a decision. Thank you.
Michael Washington, followed by Betsy McCann.
Thank you all. Well, I got my paws. Let me say one thing. This is a very touching subject. I'm not going to hold on because, you know, I talk long. But anyhow, this is very touching. I, by the way, have rescued a dog by the name of, actually, a friend of mine by the name of Brandy. Yes. By the way, she was just straying in the community. I asked her later, I said, hey, ma'am, what are you going to do with your dog? She's gotten too heavy for me, I can't feed her. And I said, well, ma'am, we're not going to just let her stray away. Come on. And she's a cocker spaniel, too. I said, come on, I'll take her. Actually, she's a dog that's very therapeutic, too. A very wonderful lady, elderly lady that I'm also a provider for. And she keeps her very well safe. And let me tell you all one thing. Again, dogs are just like human beings. They are the very fiber that helps a community grow strong, make you feel good about yourself, and at the same time, run you up under the table if you don't want to feed them right, too. But anyhow, I want to thank you all again. And I support this great cause here. And if anybody does, please follow through with it. Thank you all very much.
Betsy McCann, followed by Natalie Cross.
Thank you all for letting us be here today. I've been an advocate for animals my whole life and I've worked with about every rescue in the city. Right now, I'm focusing on transport because we need to get the dogs out of Oklahoma City. There's not enough homes and there's not enough places in the shelters. So, I'm working with organizations like Fetch Fido a Flight, where we send hundreds of dogs out of the city, out of the state and to other states where they find wonderful homes. States where there's waiting for dogs. They don't have a overpopulation like we do because they're kind of doing it better. But I've been an advocate all my life. 25 years ago, I served on the Citizens Advisory Committee at the shelter for many years, representing volunteers for animal welfare. And we tried to make things better. We had lots of suggestions and there were small changes. It's been a long road. My son did his Eagle Scout Community Service Project 30 years ago. He organized and mobilized over 100 people. We came to the shelter. We kind of did a facelift mostly just to raise awareness. We couldn't do much, of course, with a lot of money. But shortly after that, the new facility that's existing now was built. And I like to think he had a part of that, that was the awareness that was raised that helped facilitate that. But I just ask you to remember what's been said here. The name shelter is, you know, explains the situation that we don't have. We need to have a true shelter that shelters animals. And I know you said it'd be hard to go there. It is hard to go there. Everybody here that's been there, but I suggest that you go because you'll leave a changed person. And please, let's get this done. Thank you.
Natalie Cross, followed by Cynthia Armstrong.
I just want to say real quickly, I'm Natalie Cross. I own Blazes Tribute Equine Rescue. We started our organization in 2001 to primarily support the Oklahoma City Animal Welfare Division. I was a volunteer about 20 years ago with dogs and cats. Had no idea they had livestock in the back behind their facility. So, I quickly learned that they had no outlet for that, so we started. I, too, have an undisclosed amount of other animals because I can't go inside the shelter. I try to just beeline my way in, sign out my horse and leave. If I get caught seeing something else, it primarily will probably make its way home with me. So, watching the shelter over the last 20 years, I've seen a lot of growth and they certainly have outgrown their current facility. So, I'm just here to say that, you know, Blazes, for one, is in very much support of this project and I hope everybody else will support it as well.
Cynthia Armstrong.
Hi, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to express my support for MAPS for Animals. I have a longstanding relationship with the Oklahoma City Animal Shelter, both personal and professional. I, too, was a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee to the shelter back in the mid-'90s. And then, I began working for the Humane Society of the United States as the Oklahoma Director. We did a comprehensive shelter evaluation at the request of city council back in the late '90s. And the shelter really took those action items to heart and improved and steadily improved. We have also done a lot of training throughout the state on best practices for animal shelter. We do classes in compassion fatigue and also investigation of animal cruelty and disaster preparedness. And I have to commend the shelter staff because they have consistently availed themselves of those trainings. They always send a very good contingent to the trainings. And they, they really, I also love their community partnerships. It is incredible that their ability to collaborate and save lives. And so, I really do feel they are at a juncture where they, in order to continue this progress, it has to be in a new updated facility that is welcoming to the public. You know, I see a lot of hard things in my line of work, but I do, excuse me, have to agree that it is very depressing to visit that facility. And so, it could be, I have had the opportunity to tour around the country and see the possibilities. And Omaha, for instance, has a fabulous shelter. It's like walking into this happy, bright place and people love to go there. So, I just would ask you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our speakers on Item 3E, the animal shelter. And so, that also concludes our presentations for today. Thank you all. We do have a few citizens who signed up to speak at a more general level. So, we're going to transition to that. But if you guys want to leave, you can. It's totally up to you. You're certainly welcome to stay. I'll go ahead and call up David Nematfor. I don't believe he's here, okay? Carol Sullivan.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Sullivan. I am in Ward 2 resident. I live at 3139 Venice Boulevard. And I tell you, Tuesday's meeting and today have just been fabulous. On Tuesday, I was so in awe of the survivors who came to support Polymar. And I was particularly impressed because these are people who are publicly acknowledging they are survivors of all kinds of abuse or trauma or whatever their particular problem was. So, but when they left, everybody with the T-shirts got up to leave, I would hazard to say that there were still a lot of trauma victims and survivors in our audience. And as well as the people at home. I don't come to the meetings often, but I do tune in at home or check back in later on YouTube. So, I, because it's important for me. I had to leave the meeting. I had a 1:00 meeting somewhere else in the building on Tuesday. So, when I got home, while it was later in the evening, I checked the rest of the meeting on YouTube. And, you know, I have opinions about a lot of things that you all discuss, but I don't come up here and voice them. But I felt compelled to come today because, you know, there is some lack of conduct code for, as a survivor. You know, we learn how to avoid triggers. And when we do feel uncomfortable in a situation, we generally won't return. We've become experts at finding our comfort zone and staying where we feel safe. And so, I just want to encourage you, you know, you guys and ladies and gentlemen, allow citizens to come up here and express themselves, even when they're angry or when they're expressing hostility. You all really respect our need to tell you what's on our mind. But I really want to encourage you to think about all those people who were here on Tuesday in the T-shirts. But more so, even the ones who don't have the courage to show publicly that they're survivors or, you know, people with PTSD. And I just would hope that you might find a way to develop a code of conduct that would allow us to come up and express ourselves and express our anger or frustration, but please to require people to do it in a respectful way. Because you- please to require people to do it in a respectful way because you've got citizens here and you've got a lot of citizens at home. And I don't want to have to feel like...I would like this to be a safe place. And that's what I'd like to share. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Brad Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor Holt, and council members. Listen, there's so many pressing needs that you've been addressing here today. And what I have to share may or may not be all that pressing. It'll be for you to decide. You know, society does change. I was interested in the strategic plan of the Parks and Recreation done July of 2017. And quoting, I think, from the front page, it says, "When society changes, when recreation needs change, there will be the need to address new facilities and events." Well, in that vein, let me tell you what I found out. I'm a grandpa. I have a basketball background here in the city, but my grandkids are involved in Little League Basketball, and it's not the Little League that you and I grew up with. These are elite leagues where parents are spending thousands of dollars, and they're getting their boys and girls trained, they're going to tournaments every weekend year round, and they're going to Houston, San Antonio, Kansas City, to Dallas. This whole thing of sports tourism, you probably already are aware of. I can tell you that Doug Cooper, he is a great asset, very much aware of sports tourism and the impact it can have. Take Westfield, Indiana, outside Indianapolis. 400 acres developed into a sports complex. 1 million visitors last year, 30 miles outside Indianapolis. $100 million impact. Take Emerson, Georgia, outside of Atlanta. They're boasting more than a million visitors and multi-hundreds of millions in impact. One thing I just want to lay on the table for you, no one's paid me to do this, but I can tell you, going to Little League events in Oklahoma City, we have subpar facilities. I won't name them all. Some of you who are going to Little League Basketball have been there where the bathrooms are horrific, the organization of the tournaments is subpar, and it really could be improved. And Oklahoma City could be a hub, a place for national and regional tournaments that could have that million visitors a year and $100 million impact. I'm just suggesting that we start putting it on the radar screen, Mayor, and I would be happy to serve in my retirement years in some capacity to put a group together. I've talked to Tommy Griffin, Blake's dad, and, you know, Blake Griffin has the Elite League now in Oklahoma City. Trey Young has his elite organization in Oklahoma City. There are dozens of them, and there are thousands of Oklahoma City kids that are involved. But if you want to start the conversation, I think it would be good for Oklahoma City to be on the front edge of this sports tourism idea instead of on the backside of it. And I'd be happy to volunteer in any way I can. I'm already visiting with the Parks Director, Doug Cooper, and his staff. I've talked to Mike Carrier. I've talked to national consultants, and I've contacted some of these sports complexes to get an idea of their business model. But I think it'd be great if we'd get it. So, if you can put it on the radar screen and begin moving that forward, I think Oklahoma City centrally located I-44, I-35, and I-40, it's just a great opportunity for us.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. All right. Any closing comments, anybody? You're probably ready to go. Thank you again for your stamina. Thank you to everyone for your passion and your patience. This concludes today's meeting and today's business. Of course, we have a regular council meeting on Tuesday, but we will return to this topic on July 31st. And today, we are adjourned.